Our regular meeting, we thank you all for attending and being willing to participate here. I am going to go ahead and officially call us to order. We do have a quorum here for the AEDC as well. So because we are present here in two different quorums, on behalf of the AEDC, let the minutes reflect that their meeting is also called to order. Would ask if we had anything else we need to add, or if that's fine. Brian, all good? Okay. So we've now noticed the public for the mutual quorum. We've been called to order. If you guys would, we're gonna have Chaplain Chadwick come up here and do our invocation. If you'd please rise and stay standing for the pledges.
Thank you, Mayor. If you guys will bow your head, I'm gonna start with Isaiah today since it's Christmas time. Isaiah, Chapter 9, says, "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Of the increase of his government and peace there will be no end upon the throne of David and over his kingdom, to order it and establish it with judgment and justice, from that time forth even forever, to the zeal of hosts, we'll perform this. Father God, until you establish your kingdom on earth, please grant us and this body of men your wisdom and patience to govern justly and righteously. You are truly worthy of all honor, glory, and power. We exalt your name, God. We are reminded in this season that your son came into the world to lead humanity out of darkness and into light. May the peace that you have given through Christ be felt in all, by all, in this city. May joy resound, lift up the broken-hearted, heal the sick, and draw all men to yourself. Salvation has come into the world, for a Savior was born and died for the sins of mankind. Find us faithful, Lord, I pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen."
Thank you, Chap. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. Pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. So that's how you do that. Do we have any announcements today from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving right along, we are going to step into public comment. So item number six, gonna hand this over to Ms. City Secretary when she's ready, if she'll read us into our public comment period.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's city council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address city council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address council. At the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound to alert you that you have thirty seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We ask you, excuse me, we ask that you stay within your three minutes allotted. We have public hearings today. If you are speaking on a public hearing, we ask that you make your comment either during the public comment section or during the public hearing, but not both, in order for us to keep accurate minutes. It's your decision at which time you would like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live in the Amarillo City Limits, and then you may begin your comments to council. Again, thank you for being here today to share your thoughts with us. We will start with Tanya Winston, and after Ms. Winston will be Eric Gonzalez.
My name is Tanya Winston. I live in the Amarillo City Limits. How y'all today?
Afternoon, Ms. Tanya.
Good. I'm here, this is a difficult topic, but it is a public topic, and it's about the public restrooms and the transgender. I'm not here to judge anyone on how they live their lifestyle. However, I am a Bible believer, and I believe that Amarillo is built on morals and integrity. One of the things that we need to make clear is that when we have young children who are out and about with their parents, or maybe some teenagers that are out and about just having a good time on the weekend, we need to make it clear that all of our children are able to use public restrooms without it being a problem, in the privacy of them using the restrooms without it being a problem. As you know, for years and years in the past throughout this country, it is very known that young boys and young girls have been molested in public restrooms. You can look it up, Google it, you'll see that these type of charges and folly has happened in our society. We need to be concerned about public restrooms here in Amarillo, Texas. We need to make sure that all the restrooms is male and female gender, meaning that when you go in, you go in one at a time, use your restroom, and you come out. Other places like the Westgate Mall, hospitals, airports, they have more than one bathroom stall. We need to make sure that most of our public places have another restroom where it is, you know, same-sex gender, but you go in one at a time, that way that we never have a problem with those type of situations in Amarillo. I'm concerned about Amarillo. We don't need lawsuits or anything like that against our families and our community here in Amarillo, Texas. Like I say, I'm not one to judge a person's lifestyle, but we do need to stand on our morals, and we do need to stand on our values, and we do need to make sure that all people are safe and sound when they out and about using public restrooms. I just wanted to bring this to the panel to make sure that it's not ignored and that it's not overlooked, okay? So like I said, I believe in Christ, I believe in Scripture. That's number one and foremost in my life, and so I just, and I believe that pretty much our city is in that, in stand on that. So just look out for our children and other people who, for their safety when they're using restrooms. So we need to make sure that all of these public places have a extra restroom where people can go in one at a time, and there's no confusion with transgender and people who are trying to live their life in a public setting on any type of easier time, understanding what I'm saying, or y'all understand what I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Tanya. We understand, we appreciate you speaking here today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, ma'am.
Please don't overlook it. This is...
Next is Eric Gonzalez, and after Eric will be Dawn Stripling.
All right. Hi. My name is Eric Gonzalez, and I'm a resident here in Amarillo. Got family ties here for a lot of my life and surrounding area like Hartford. One thing that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council today is the matter of the Ten Commandments monument that's proposed for the new Amarillo City Hall. Now, I know that, of course, Christianity, Ten Commandments, and other Scripture-related to Christianity has a big cultural significance for many people in Texas and across the United States. However, with regards to this monument, the fact that we'd be putting it directly in the brand-new city hall, where all residents, including those who may be less religious or who are non-Christian, we do have non-Christian residents, of course, in Amarillo, may not feel fully welcome or partially excluded when walking into their local public government building. A few other points of concern regarding this. The Ten Commandments themselves, of course, are commandments, so instructions, having them on public property, such as, "Thou shalt not take the Lord's name in vain," or "Thou shalt have no other God before the God of the Bible," of course applies to Christians. But these, as instructions basically, don't seem like they would apply to other people when they see this monument on public grounds. So there's a concern about separation of church and state. There's also a concern about what version would be used, beyond religious or nonreligious. Would it be based off of a Masoretic text? Would it be based off of the King James Bible, more Protestant interpretation? Based off of the Old Greek translation that's more commonly associated with Catholics? So will there be wording that is neutral for all denominations, so there's no favoritism over one or the other? These are all questions we need to consider. And finally, I know that I've heard that the funding for this is meant to come from private funds rather than from public taxes. However, while this would make sense for the initial funding of such a statute, I have to wonder if the monument were to stand for decades, whether it's cleaning, custodial work on it, any other maintenance, wouldn't that eventually fall under public funds? So is this not really passing the conversation down the road for someone else? So with that, I only have a few seconds left, so I yield my time, and I hope that you consider this.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Next is Dawn Stripling, and after Mr. Stripling, Alan Feingold.
I'm Dawn Stripling. I am a resident of Amarillo, Texas. I rise to speak in regard to your consideration last month of the idea of purchasing a monument of the Ten Commandments to place at the new city hall. It was suggested that you were not considering the Ten Commandments to be a religious artifact, but a historical one. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the commandments, the first commandment is, "I am Yahweh your God, who brought you up out of Egypt, out of the house of slavery. You shall have no other gods before me." That is a religious statement, if I've ever heard one. Therefore, I submit that the Ten Commandments must be considered religious. According to the majority of religious adherents in Amarillo, the Ten Commandments are of value solely because they are the Word of God to the people of God. To demean the Word of God by claiming it is merely a historical artifact would mean that the city council takes the position that what is taught in every Sunday school class in Amarillo is no longer deemed by this council to be worthy to be considered religious, but merely historical, even though its origin is from the mouth of God. If you desire to erect a historical artifact, what would be most fitting for the government building in our nation and in our city is a monument to the Bill of Rights, of which the first is, "Congress shall make no law establishing, respecting, and establishment of religion, or preventing the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." I would think that would apply to city councils. I hope I've made the point that the best monument for council to install at our new city hall would be the Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments to the Constitution, which I fear that none of us today could recite by memory. So we probably need such a monument, which is definitely historical, and has never claimed the religious authority of being God's Word. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Alan Feingold, and after Mr. Feingold will be Margaret Jenkins.
Hello, Alan Feingold. I reside at 2601 North Grand Street in Amarillo. I didn't want to get in the middle of a dispute about a monument, religious or historical, but I do suggest the following: If you decide to go ahead with this, keep the Roman numerals out of it. Now, I would like to ask Mr. Grayson a question. Have you received any status report from the head of the city's Division for Capital Improvements regarding utilities projects, which were authorized by the Amarillo City Commission on November the nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, under the title Community Investment Program? Did you receive yet any comprehensive report on the status of the various projects that were listed in that, oh, I guess we'd say, an amendment to the city, or perhaps it was just one of the general resolutions? Mr. Mayor, have you received any comprehensive report on the projects that are listed in the Community Investment Program?
Yeah, so to use your time well, let me get with you and make sure that we have a follow-up. I'm aware of a statement affecting you had a meeting with Floyd Hartman, who directs most of those projects.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know, Mr. Hartman, have you prepared a report for the city commission on the status of these projects?
Should we provide an annual feedback?
I said, did you provide the commission with a comprehensive report on the status of these projects?
Provide appropriate feedback.
I don't know what appropriate feedback means, but I'll tell you this much: These were essential projects. More than a quarter of a billion dollars was authorized for these projects, and on a single one of them, which is listed on today's agenda, HH, the approved amount, or the suggested amount, was twenty-five million, and now it's up to seventy-five million. Now, I don't know how many of these projects were completed, but I know that there was some severe lack of project completion over at the Hollywood wastewater treatment plant, and I would like to know if this commission is going to insist on having a comprehensive report for itself and for the general public. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mr. Feingold.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Margaret Jenkins, and after Ms. Jenkins will be Cassandra Green.
Good afternoon, City Council, those present and online. My name is Margaret Jenkins. I am a resident of Amarillo. I am here today to state my opposition of the historical document, i.e. the Ten Commandments, being placed on the grounds of the new city hall building. My opposition is related to the separation between church and state. I disagree that the historical document is the basis for our laws and Constitution. Various documents and texts figure in the development of American law, among them English common and statutory law, Roman law, the civil law of continental Europe, and private international law. The founders listed its primary influences as the writings of William Blackstone, John Locke, Adam Smith, and others, as well as the Magna Carta, the Federalist Papers, and other sources. Each of these documents had a far greater influence on the American law than the Ten Commandments. Legal and historical record does not include significant and meaningful references to the Ten Commandments, the Pentecost, or to biblical law generally. Aside from a failed attempt in the seventeenth century to establish a biblically-based legal system in the Puritan colonies, American law is generally viewed as having a secular origin. Put simply, that the original texts viewed in their entirety are unmistakably religious statements dealing with the religious obligations and with moral subject to religious sanction. When the government initiates an effort to place this statement alone in public view, a religious object is unmistakable. I am aware that the Supreme Court of the U.S. has issued a confusing pair of rulings on the other types of Ten Commandments in the Van Orden versus Perry. It is that the Ten Commandments could be on display on the grounds of the Texas State Capitol in recognition of religions in American history. However, Mercury County versus ACLU of Kentucky blocked the state from displaying the Ten Commandments on courthouse and public schools, determining that government officials' goal had been to advance a religious message which violates the Establishment Clause. The court has also repeatedly expressed concerns about the Ten Commandments' religious message, saying that, "When the text is displayed prominently on its own, it sends a message about God rather than American history." May I continue?
If you can take one more minute, ma'am.
Thank you. In Justice Breyer's opinion of the Kentucky case reads, "In today's world, in a nation of so many different religions and comparable nonreligious fundamental beliefs, a more contemporary state effort to focus upon a religious text is certain likely to prove divisive in a way that this longstanding pre-existing monument has not. New and recent displays, therefore, find it difficult to pass constitutionality scrutiny. The monument that the council is considering is a new monument, which does not exist, and the challenge to its location is clear. The church has entered the state. Would the council members consider placement of a Buddhist law, or Islamic Declaration of Law, or a Mormon Statement of Marriage plurality? I respectfully submit that the council reconsider the placement of a privately funded religious monument in the new city hall complex. I appreciate your time to possibly avert another diverse, diverse split in the Amarillo citizens."
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
Thank you.
Next is Cassandra Green.
Can I ask and speak on the other one of my items coming up?
Yes. Well, if it's a public hearing.
No, I believe it's on...
It's not. You'll need to speak during public comment.
That being said, I only provided, I have them all back there, but I have three documents.
One second.
Y'all can share them.
Okay.
Okay. I'm an Amarillo resident of Randall County. My name is Cassie Green. Good afternoon, Councilman and Mayor Cole. Thank you for giving me this time to speak on item eight K. I come to you as a concerned Amarillo citizen. After doing further research on the Real-Time Crime Center, I have found several issues concerning the protection of our privacy. I will only speak on the most pressing two of my concerns, as I'm afraid the process has already started rolling out and becoming more materialized than we even realize, or that we would be comfortable with. This is why I would like to formally ask you to roll back item eight K due to my recent findings. Finding number one: There is an organization that you've received grants from. It's called Project Safe Neighborhood. You'll see in the documentation that I did a little bit of research about them, and I'm finding that they have ties with homely insecurity. And I would like to issue a call to the mayor and to the council members to further investigate policies, procedures, and ties from this entity explicitly disclosing to the citizens what their requirements are for issuing grants. I would also like you, moving forward, to not limit it to just this organization, but to retroactive this request to any of the grants already received that contribute to the budget of half a million. And I believe that those grants were received in September. It is my finding that Project Safe Neighborhood is a government organization, and I find that extremely concerning that they could possibly have access to my private information. My finding number two: I'm aware that you have constructed a resolution to address the concerns brought up with the initial development of the Real-Time Crime Center. I appreciate this document that you guys came up with. However, it is my concern that it's only a resolution, holding no binding legally, therefore not really providing any form of privacy protection to the Amarillo citizens. I would like to propose that I could help you form a committee on behalf of Amarillo citizens to join your efforts in creating a more legal binding document. Also, I have a concern that this is in violation to Texas Legislature Act HB sixteen thirty-one, and I'm wondering how did y'all get past that to provide this Real-Time Crime Center? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cass.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Misty Collier. I went ahead and AI'd some of the documents from our founding forefathers that include God. That's the Declaration of Independence, the Acts of the Confederates seventeen eighty-one, the Northwest Ordinance seventeen eighty-seven, the preamble to the Constitution seventeen eighty-seven, state constitutions, and then the Federalist Papers. So that's all I have to say about that. I'm gonna go ahead and go back to what I actually came here to talk to y'all about today, and that is, I'm gonna ask you what protocols have been set in place to keep Amarillo from rationing its citizens' water? That is why they use, that's why they use the, and that's actually in your agenda today, you're gonna approve a meter that's gonna see how much the water is regular, or what level the water is at. So that's why I'm asking you that. And then, what protocols have been put into place that protect the privacy rights from the Real-Time Crime Center, which is the cameras that y'all are gonna approve today on the budget? on the budget? And then I'm gonna ask you that if no protocols have been set into place, I would ask that you roll all these items until said protocols have been put into place. Sorry, I'm gonna start over. If no protocols have been set into place to protect our citizens from their privacy, or to protect our citizens from not having their water rationed, which they do in California, I would ask that y'all roll these items until said protocols have been set into place so that our citizens are protected from these things. And I have sent y'all multiple engagements and papers and proof of these incidents. So I would ask that you please roll these items until those said protocols have been set into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty.
Hey, Misty, just as a statement of fact, I know, I think that what you're referring to is item CC, the lake level monitoring and that type of deal, that's for floodwater. Those are only playa lakes, it's not for any of our source water that we get our drinks from.
Okay, I apologize about that.
Only for floodwater.
I apologize about that. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up today.
Okay, thank you for everyone who spoke. At this time, I would ask if I have anyone who would like to offer public comment. So, Mr. Ford, I saw your hand first, and then Mr. McGonigal, I saw your second. Mr. Ford, if you'd come forward.
While those are going out, I'd also like to echo the statements that we are a, all of our state constitutions, 13 colonies, began with a requirement that office holders be of a religious, either Protestant or Catholic, and so to say that the, our country has secular origins would be a misstatement of history. There are three meeting agendas posted for this space at the present time, and I know that probably it's not something that it's, we have a unique circumstance where we have two members of the AEDC Temporary Board of Directors, and we also have the chairman here and maybe other members, so, but you have, you have it in here where you're calling to order three, actually three meetings. One regular meeting of the AEDC, for some reason, the city posted a different agenda, a work session of the AEDC, which I can see why they have called it a work session because it has work session items, and then you have the city council meeting. And so, I've offered, perhaps if this happens again, a posting, it's a notice of quorum, it's a very simple process, you have a quorum here, there's not, if you have, if you post a meeting, there's a, there's a general expectation to anybody who's reading this, that the meeting will be convened, and that there will be minutes. And for the AEDC won't be producing minutes, I don't, I don't think so. So, and the city council agenda does not contemplate two meetings occurring at the same time, or two bodies meeting together as you have done in the past. So I've just offered that notice of quorum, just as a possible solution to that. It doesn't have to be possible quorum, you know you're gonna have a quorum here, so you just post notice of quorum. The artist of incorporation, the other thing that I've provided you, in general, Mr. Hyde has done an excellent job, however, I would strongly suggest that we follow the law, and the law states that the art certificate of formation, or the Articles of incorporation for a Type A corporation must state that the corporation is governed by this chapter, and that's chapter 504. So 501 and 502, there's no requirement for those to be stated, and the 501 issue, as Mr. Hyde stated previously, and kind of set the record straight on Type A projects required for infrastructure projects in 501, those things are extremely important to have clear, and then that way we won't be doing infrastructure projects for general retail, which does not qualify as a Type A project. Finally, the last question I have is, and this is a question of fact, is whether or not a, any type of criminal or law enforcement referral has been made to district attorney, Texas Rangers, any law enforcement body in the state of Texas or federal regarding the range and the misappropriations, the malappropriations of $1.3 million in taxpayer monies? That's, that's a question of fact, so I'm just curious if anyone can answer that question, yes or no?
Mr. Ford, we appreciate you speaking. We'll take all of that under advisement, and as a statement of fact, we can't answer that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any chance you might elaborate why we can't, that can't be answered?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next was Mr. McGonigal, if you'd come up.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Jeff McGonigal McGonigal, also known as the Non-Meier, the Shaman, Coach Mac, the Pilot, the Headless Mayor Jeff, the Professor Son, Son of a, and many more. I live in Amar, where churches bear spray the mentally illo, Texas, of the currently divided state, divided United States of America. It's been a while. I was getting a mountaintop view of the legal bribery in the Thor District 87 race. I'm happy to be back. To all, I honor, respect, and have gratitude for your excellence. May you all wake up to your full potential. A commandment of excellence, number one, thou shalt consider and respect the all in regards to all decisions, discussions, and actions taken where only win-win can be the result or the outcome. Sent by the all, it's giving me Ten Commandments of Excellence for the city leaders. The intention is to bring new life. Amarillo, the city that loves. These are to be Ten Commandments erected at the new City Hall. These are to be erected, not religious ones, that throw shade of disrespect at the many. Much like this invocation does, and continues to do, as a Buddhist Christian, one thing I understand that most Americans don't, and that's the immutable, immutable law of cause and effect. What you sow, you shall reap, the law of karma. Every time this invocation is performed, it causes a future wave of disrespect back on those partaking in it. Since this returns as a much stronger action, more harm may be created than good. It's like a curse. There's safety in respect, there's safety in respect for the all. Again, thou shalt consider and respect the all in regards to all decisions, discussions, and actions taken where only win-win can be the result, the outcome. I expect Commandments Two and Three for the next meeting, 10 by March, and then hopefully on the ballot in May. I'm sure one will be regarding truth and trust. And on the agenda, I was expecting something about Kip Phillips today, but that just didn't happen. Truth and trust. P.S., if we are making signs for the city, let the school students erect it, this is on the I-40, it's time to create a culture of youth, no more old folks home, a culture of youth. Viva Amarillo. McGonigal speaks. Viva Amarillo.
Thank you, Mr. McGonigal. I greatly appreciate your comments, sir. Did I see another hand? Yes, sir, in the back.
Good afternoon.
Mind to give us your name for the record?
My name is Zachariah Harvey. I thought I signed up, but I guess I did not, so here I am now. Not to sound too much like a broken record, but I am here to offer my opposition to the idea of putting a monument to the Ten Commandments at the new City Hall, and I did type up something to say. So I was born here in Amarillo, I've lived here most of my life, save for a few years here and there, but I have lived here most of my life, so I'm very familiar with the city. But I would like to say, you know, before I begin, you know, I am a Christian, I was baptized, and I am a Christian, I do go to church. But the issue that I have is that this inherently is a monument to religion, you know. Mr. Mayor, you made the comment that this was to be seen in a historical context, but what I would argue is that the Declaration of Independence is a historical document, the Bill of Rights is a historical document. I feel that something else would be more representative of us as Americans, rather than the Ten Commandments to the Bible. And so, that's really all I want to say. So, thank you for your time.
We appreciate you speaking, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else here who would like to offer public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Fisher.
My name is Mike Fisher, I live in the city of Amarillo. I've got a solution for your Ten Commandments. You just sell it, convey the little two-by-two-piece property to a nonprofit and let them maintain it, and you can, we can just put this to bed. I do have a suggestion, that 11th commandment, rules for everyone. I recently asked the AEDC for full breakdown of financial records, wanted everything since the inception of the AEDC, the date of the transaction, the payee, and the amount, pretty simple. But I received a half-truth in return, I received general ledger entries, it's kinda tells me where the money goes, but didn't tell me who got it. And what I, I have a big problem with is the person that is the treasurer of the AEDC, we've got a huge conflict, and it, and I'm not here to say that this person is stealing, but if the person makes the same mistake at both places, the whole purpose of a board are for, for people, to have different people in different places is to catch things. It can catch the fraud, but it can also catch just flat-out mistakes. So we have the same person that's over the budget, and the money, and how it's spent at the AEDC that approved a million bucks to go to some nonprofit that wasn't approved, it wasn't voted on, you guys didn't vote on it. So let's go to the thou shall not steal. So if I take this, if I walk out of here with this, if I try to, this cop's gonna arrest me. If you guys, if Cole Stanley says I can take this, now he's in trouble, because he doesn't have the authority to give this to me. So, the person that decided to give this money twice, made mistakes twice, because this person is also over the finances at the city of Amarillo. So if it, if there's nothing shady going on, fine, but this may have been caught if we had separated the people. So I suggest that you take that into consideration of separating those roles, and maybe put it in the bylaws too, so, because once you guys walk out, they're just gonna go back to the same old stuff. The other thing I have is, I'd like for you guys to take some action on the request that I have. I think you guys have the authority, I don't think there's any problem with giving me those records. And that same person that's over the money at the AEDC, the money at the city, is also the person that probably made the decision to just give me the half-truth. See, I really think you guys should take that into consideration, and look at who's working in our own backyard, and might be in the middle of all this, these shady transactions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do I have anyone else here today who would like to offer public comment before we move on with our meeting? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment, appreciate everyone for being willing to speak and address the council. We will take those ideas under advisement. Moving us into our discussion, item 7A, review agenda items for regular meeting. Do I have anything from council that needs to be reviewed before we move to 7B? Okay, we're moving along. We have Mr. Freeman here to walk us through a leasing program for a fire department vehicle.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to give a brief introduction before I hand it over to Chief Mays and his team. Just a reminder of what we've kinda gone through with budget. Last summer, we discussed quite a bit about leasing opportunities, ways to fund these vehicles, leasing versus buying, the market implications, the availability of vehicles, so we've had to get creative. Recently, we've gotten feedback from council that we moved ahead on our regular fleet through Public Works to start leasing vehicles. What we're here today is an opportunity to talk about your public safety pillar and funding for those vehicles that are necessary for our fire department to operate and protect the city. So Chief Mays and Deputy Chief Kuba have spent a significant amount of time analyzing their fleet and options, also with the assistance of Laura Storrs and Donnie Hooper. If you want to get into the mind of someone that's very smart, just take a look at Chief Kuba's spreadsheets, it'll, it'll kinda blow your mind how he's had to lay everything out for this discussion topic, but he's gonna dive further into, into the data and where they've come to their conclusions today as we get through the presentation. So you are gonna hear some large dollar amounts today as part of this proposal, so I wanted to put it into context before you, before you get to those numbers. The operating plus the capital improvement plan this year for the fire department is just shy of $50 million, $48.5 million. That's just for the staff to operate the fire department, the CIP for any equipment purchases, everything in this year's budget. To lease 15 vehicles, very expensive vehicles at that, over the next few years, it would cost between $1.5 million and $2.8 million in ongoing annual cost to make the payments for this program. Some of that, we hope that would be offset with better maintenance, wardy programs, just having more efficient vehicles by updating our fleet. So those payments are 3% to 6% of what AFD's current annual budget is, just to offer that perspective as you hear these, hear these numbers. The same, one and a half million to 2.8 million in comparison to buying power, how we've done in the past, you just set aside one to one and a half millions and buy a truck. Typically, you'd also get it in the same year. What we're proposing in today's value, so that's maybe one and a half trucks, because the costs have increased that much. As part of this leasing program, you can compare that to the opportunity over the next three years to order 15 vehicles. The unfortunate part is that we won't receive these vehicles for three-plus years, so it's making an investment today by giving this direction that would allow us to get the cycle going, to start getting these vehicles on a regular basis, knowing the realities of the manufacturing, the time, and the expense involved. As I mentioned, it takes multiple years to get those, so it's also important to note that any direction you give today, or action that might be taken next month related to this item by current city council, won't hit this budget. So you're actually planning for a future budget to start bringing on those payments, based on how long it takes to build those fire trucks. Lastly, I just want to say, of course, as staff, we're always looking for additional opportunities to fund these vehicles. Recently, we've been investigating another debt service option. So if we bring this forward based on the direction you give staff today after you receive this presentation, know that we will also bring you any other options that might fit the purchase of these vehicles, whether on the debt service side or the general fund, maintenance, and operations side. The annual payments regardless would be about the same, so it's really just a choice on which side of the tax rate you wanna fund those. But the other benefit to that is, future council, when it comes time to make those payments, move forward on that debt, would get to decide, do you wanna continue using the debt, or do you wanna find another funding source? So, it really would give the approval for options for future councils. So, that is just a very high-level overview. I'm now gonna pass it over to Chief Mays to start the presentation, and then introduce Chief Kuba.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, Chief.
So on behalf of the AFD, we're very thankful here to be, to here this afternoon, to outline our current status of our AFD fleet. Specifically, and this will be the main focus of what we're here to present on, is the frontline fire engines and our ladder trucks. So we've put together a presentation that Deputy Chief David Kova will, in a few moments, walk everybody through, and it's our, basically our aim today is to update council of where we're at, and to get your blessings as we proceed towards what we think is the route that helps us, is the most fiscally sound route to procure the trucks that we need to meet our mission. Before I think, turn things over to Chief Kuba- Before I turn things over to Chief Koba, I want to state my appreciation to city staff for their help in this effort, as well as, I've got to be remiss in not praising Chief Koba and his team. They've spent hours and dedication to looking through all the data. And if you know anything about the fire service, we're not traditionally steeped in having a lot of data, and that's been a transition that's been a little difficult for the fire service all over the place, not just here in Amarillo. But it's a blessing to work with folks like that. So thank you, city staff, and once again, Chief Koba, thank you. And I'll turn things over to Chief Koba.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Could you guys go ahead and switch to the next slide, please? Before we get started, I wanted to discuss some of the most common fire apparatus that the council and the community will see out there on the street. Primarily, this discussion is going to focus on engines and ladders, but I'm going to kind of branch or discuss some of these other trucks you'll see out there. On the top left of the screen is a fire engine. That's our Workhorse Fire Truck for the fire department, responds to all incident types. And its primary response is going to be EMS response, and they also are able to provide advanced life support care. On the top right of the screen is a ladder truck. Those also respond to all types, all of our incident types. Their primary response is going to be fire calls, vehicle collisions, and other hazardous incidents, and they too can provide advanced life support EMS care. On the bottom left of the screen is a platform ladder truck. This is a ladder truck with a platform at the tip of the ladder. The platform provides firefighters a safe working area to perform numerous tasks, including the most important victim rescue operations. And that one's currently on order right now to go into the soon-to-be-built Fire Station 14. There at the bottom middle is a grass rig. Grass rigs are located throughout the city. They are built and equipped for wildland firefighting in that wildland environment. And then at the bottom right is a command unit. Battalion chiefs ride in these every day, and they're the incident command units on scene. They're equipped with enhanced communication capabilities and supplies and equipment primarily for fire incidents. Next slide, please. Wanted to look at the historical replacement cycle of our fire apparatus, particularly engines and ladders. Engine and ladders have been historically replaced every 13 years. They're in frontline service for 13 years, then they will be replaced, then when the new replacement truck arrives, they go to reserve status for two to seven years. Fire truck purchases have mostly been consistent for many years. We typically order one or two engines or ladders a year, a typical cycle on buying trucks. Some of the most recent purchases that you all have approved in fiscal year '22, '23, two of the three replacement engines were replaced and purchased. We also ordered that platform truck, which is that addition to our fleet that's going to go to Station 14, and we ordered one command unit. In '23 and '24, we paused engine and ladder replacements to give us time to perform an analysis based on the current challenges the city and fire truck manufacturers were facing. We wanted to gain a better understanding of our fleet and find short- and long-term replacement solutions. However, we did make some purchases in '23, '24. We did add one command unit to our fleet for the additional third battalion chief that was added. We also ordered three fire marshal office units, which are very similar to command units, two grass rigs, and one rehab trailer. Next slide, please. Our comprehensive fleet evaluation began about 12 months ago. Early discussions started with the city fleet and then progressed to discussions with city management on our fire fleet replacement schedule and how our plan would be integrated into the overall city fleet replacement plans. We discussed our needs and some of our known challenges. While we were having those discussions, we were looking at national standards on fire truck replacements, we looked at other departments, and then there are trends throughout the fire service on how other folks are replacing their fire trucks. A big area we focused in on in this evaluation was age, mileage, hours, repair, and ownership costs. Some of the areas we assessed were fire truck manufacturers and vendors, fire truck specifications. We wanted to ensure that our specs matched up with our operational needs, and that's where my team of fire truck experts came in, and it wanted to make sure everything was right. And these guys are experts in fire trucks, looked for sheets and sheets of specs to make sure everything is dialed in just right. And it's very particular for our needs as well. Along that time, we also had to start discussions with finance companies about finance options and master lease agreements. Next slide, please. Through our research, we found that apparatus age was the most common metric used to determine apparatus replacement. Here's a chart of our engine age as of 2025. At the left-hand of the chart are our frontline engines. There's 13 of those. And on the, I'm sorry, the left-hand side is our frontline engines. On the right-hand side is our reserve apparatus. Six of our frontline engines, 46% are 10 or more years old. Next slide, please. And then here's a chart of our ladders' age as of 2025. The four frontline are on the left-hand side of the slide, and the three on the right are the reserve apparatus. As you can see, one of our reserves is over 20 years old this year. Next slide, please. The fleet industry challenges are equal to all of their fleet challenges within the city and throughout the country. One of our primary challenges is the escalating cost of fire trucks at 30% to 40% average annual increase over the last several years. We've seen 100% cost increase since some of our last purchases. The current cost of a fully-equipped engines around $1.5 million, a ladder's around $2.3 million on average. The last two replacement engines were purchased in '22, '23, and they were around $646,000 each. That's over, definitely over 100% increase in cost to today's dollars. The last two replacement ladders purchased in 2022 were around $1 million each. That's over 100% cost increase. The one thing that we didn't see a big increase because we ordered it sooner is that platform truck. With the truck and equipment, it came in around 100, $1.8 million, and that was about an 80% increase since 2020 costs. Typically, trucks were ordered and built within the same fiscal year. The current build times are now at three to five years, and I've even heard of some of the manufacturers having up to six-year build times. Even over the last year, while we were doing this evaluation, we saw build times go from two to three years for E1 manufactured engines. Next slide, please. When we were looking to optimize our fleet replacement cycle, we evaluated a seven-through-15-year replacement cycles. We concluded that the 10-year replacement cycle is the most balanced replacement cycle that will allow us to increase operational reliability and have plans in place to rotate our fleet sooner to reduce repair costs. Our research revealed that years 6 through 10 are, on average, the most expensive cost of ownership for our engines and ladders. By implementing a 10-year truck rotation, we anticipate reducing repairs, overall cost of ownership, by placing our new trucks at the busiest stations for the first four years, then rotating to the slower stations for the next four years, and then finally rotating to the reserve status for the final two years of service. If this proposal is approved, we will place our current engines and ladders on a 15-year replacement plan. This will allow us to get all we can, allows us to get all we can get out of our current fleet while we implement this 10-year replacement cycle for our new trucks. This plan will allow us to remain operational efficient in a fiscally responsible manner, and by implementing this plan, we'll have all the engines and ladders on a 10-year replacement cycle by 2039, with the exception of the new platform truck, which will be replaced in 2041. Additionally, we'll be in a good position to reduce our engine fleet by two, since we'll have a more reliable frontline and reserve engines. Next slide, please. For many years, we purchased Farrar fire trucks. Over the past few years, we noticed that there was a decline in quality and customer service. That, in addition to the increased costs and build times, put us in a position to start evaluating other manufacturers. Over the past year, we evaluated E1, Pierce, Rosenbauer, US Fire Apparatus, and we already knew quite a bit about Farrar fire trucks. E1 stood out as a frontrunner for their superior build quality that ensures our firefighters are safe and the truck is reliable and durable. They have excellent quality control throughout the build process that is process-dependent, not person-dependent, and their trucks are competitively priced. Safe Industries is the vendor for E1 fire trucks. In the last year, our longstanding fire truck vendor, Lone Star Fire Apparatus, merged with Safe. With the merger, we were able to maintain our Lone Star rep. This was a huge advantage as he knows a whole lot about our fleet and our challenges. By moving to Safe, we also gained more robust support and service programs. Next slide, please. There we go. One of the value-added programs with Safe is their warranty work reimbursement program. This program allows our very talented fire fleet mechanics to perform the warranty work and be reimbursed for that labor. These reimbursements will help offset the growing cost of repairs, and Safe Industries also has traded options for our current fleet. Next slide, please. When we were looking at financing lease options, our goal is to look at master lease agreements, which gave us flexibility now and in the future when we needed to add new vehicles. Two finance companies were evaluated. We worked with them through multiple scenarios to develop a lease agreement around build times and our proposed replacement cycles. The proposals cover the cost of trucks, equipment, and 10-year warranties. They also took into account Safe Industries' guaranteed buyback option when developing their plans. Next slide, please. This chart compares to where we are now to where we'll be in three years. It's highlighting that three-year truck build time. In 2028, when these trucks deliver, if we were to get these trucks purchased, and then three years from now when they deliver, eight of our frontline engines will be 10 or more years old. That's 61% of our frontline engines. And it's important to note that these frontline trucks, they don't get a break until then. We've used just about every option we have to rotate our current fleet to get the best truck at the busiest places and in the best condition. Next one is our average ladder age, comparing '25 and '28. Again, one of our reserve trucks will be well over 20 years old at that time, and ladder one, our busy ladder truck in downtown, will be 10 years old in 2028. Next slide, please. Here's our replacement needs over the next three years. In '24, '25, we proposed ordering six engines and two ladders. In '25, '26, ordered three engines. In '26, '27, ordered four engines. These initial needs match closely with the previous replacement plans that have been in place for many years. These first three years, our need to catch up and adjust to new build times that we were not experiencing four or five years ago. The immediate needs are in years one through three. We don't have any replacements forecasted for years four and five. And I also want to let you guys know that we do have a long-term, 30-year plan built out as well to look at, looks, short-term and very, very long-term, how this can play out if everything's forecasted outright. Next slide, please. The cost estimates, year one cost, that's six engines and two ladders. If we were to pay for those trucks upfront, it'd be around $13.5 million. Oh, let's see. You might have to go to the very last slide on these cost estimates. There we go. Year one cost, if we were to pay upfront, is $13.5 million. The finance lease option on that for a year one cost would be around $1.5 million annual payment. Year two cost, if we were to add three engines, those are $4.6 million if we pay for those upfront. Added year one and year two on that for a total $2.1 million annual payment. Year three cost would be four engines at $6.5 million. Added year one, year two, and year three at about a $2.8 million annual payment. And that gets you, all of our frontline engines would be replaced at that time after we complete year three. Could you please go to the evaluation conclusion slide? There we go. Okay, so here's the conclusion. What did we achieve? We identified the challenges and opportunities to improve our fleet readiness. What we're prioritizing, a proposal to implement a cost-effective strategy to meet our operational needs and those needs within the city as well. What we need moving forward is continued collaboration and support to secure the essential fire apparatus. Next slide. Here's our next steps and implementation plan. Today, we're here to seek council feedback. With that feedback, we do have, we'd hope to have a goal to present a proposal for approval in January of 2025, and then begin a phased execution of the 10-year replacement cycle while we're collaborating with Safe Industries and the finance company for a seamless rollout. Okay. That's my final slide. Do you guys have anything for me? Any questions I can answer for you guys?
Questions for Chief?
Yes, I have two.
Yes, sir.
Walk me through, how do y'all end up with reserve apparatus through the leasing?
We just put, if we were to place our reserve, we'd have those as part of the reserve apparatus or a part of the leasing program. Currently, we just rotate our oldest trucks into reserve, but this plan does account for also keeping reserve apparatus in the lease program. And then after 10 years, we would turn those back in or exercise that guaranteed buyback that we have offered.
Okay. And the last question I have is, when we're looking at, I think, is a seven, 10-year... So with the 10-year plan, I mean, are they starting build for your apparatus to actually be ready at year 10? Or is it year 10, and then you have three years after that?
Yeah, so we'd go through the build time, and we'd have ownership of that truck for the 10 years after delivery. So we'd have this first three years of waiting for it to be built, and then we'd get that 10 years of full ownership to be able to, number one, exercise all the benefits of the warranty, and then kind of build our replacement schedule to keep it consistent.
So at year 10, you know, so say this plan was in place, at year 10, when it's time to replace this new engine that we just leased?
Yes.
You'll get that at year 10? Or you get that at like year 13? When do they start building your replacement engine, I guess is what I'm asking.
For these particular leased trucks, I can look at, three years before these go out of service, I would have to make that order. Three years before this one hits, and it's kind of laid out, you'd be able to see it where they both happen at the same time. So you've got to really stay on top of these build times and getting them delivered and retired at the same point.
Okay.
So that's up to the leasing company to, once they, once you determine your replacement schedule, they know ahead of time, so they go ahead and order the vehicle so that at the year that it needs to be replaced, it's ready to go. We don't have to wait three years to build.
Yeah, they'll start the build process, they'll get in the queue with the manufacturer, and so that, yeah, that start process will start as soon as we're ready to start, you know, go through with that proposal and go through that contract.
So when the pricing or the payments go, do they require any other different payment when those new vehicles are ordered?
When they're ordered, it depends on how you set it up. You could set it up for just starting your payments at year one or year two, and then they have some other different options that you can, that will allow them to, you can set up your payment structures in different ways.
Okay. So on the engine trucks and ladder trucks, will we ever, at some point, will we ever own them? They'll just always be leased vehicles, correct?
There will always be that option where you can just, you just pay out, you know, you just pay out the whole loan and pay out all the term on that. I would suggest, I mean, you're always going to look at it. So right now, I'm doing the best I can to forecast what it'll look like in 10 years, but definitely the next generation, whoever's doing my job, will have to see, what does this look like next? So I would propose continuing to replace them through that 10-year cycle, just based on everything I could see on that overall ownership cost. I think it's going to be very cost-efficient to do it that way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then from the fleet standpoint, I mean, it's a win for those guys as far as the, you know, maintenance and everything.
Yeah, the fleet guys, they're extremely busy right now. You guys kind of saw the age of our apparatus right now. They can't wait to get some new trucks coming in. This will give them a huge relief to be able to stay on top of what we currently have, and it'll be a big win for them. And I really, and they're such a talented group of folks, and they have a really specialty service they offer different than other departments throughout the city where they're specialized in working on fire trucks. And with the fire truck, it can't just be a little bit ready, it's got to be 100% ready, and those guys make it happen.
Councilman?
How does this affect the budget? I mean, let's look at what we spent last year and what you're going to ask me to do next year. I mean, if I look at the figures, I'm looking at one point something, then two points something. How does that compare with our budgets we've been doing?
Looking at the initial, whenever I, when I started this process, I kind of looked at what did we normally spend each year to buy one fire truck or buy two fire trucks? And that's kind of where I landed on, what is, what's an annual payment that might be reasonable? That's changed a little bit. How it will impact it all the way down to year three, I'll have to look at it, but we're going to continue to always buy fire trucks. I haven't quite done the best, I might be able to get some help on analysis of what it looks like as opposed to paying upfront cash for these, because that's going to be a huge in the budget that I really couldn't really account for based on these cost increases.
I definitely would like an analysis with Laura on this program here.
Yes.
Because we, you know, our budgets are pretty tight, and I need to know where that's going to be, because if we make a commitment, we're looking at a 10-year commitment here. And I just want to make sure this balances at the end.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So if y'all could give us those figures and numbers, I would appreciate it. I definitely see the need of us buying this equipment. It's a public safety factor, and we need to be on top of that completely. I just want to make sure how we're going to pay for it, how we allot that money, and set it aside so it's there when we need it.
Yes, sir.
So just to confirm, at the end of the 10 years, they will either pay us an amount?
Yes.
Of that to get it back, and we can use that to reinvest then back into, or however we want to use that money?
You have a couple of different options. It could be reinvest that back in, or it'll pay that, that buyback will pay our final payment. It just depends on which one you'll look at on the finance options.
So it'll be our judgment at that point whether we want to then pay the additional to outright on it or... to outright on it, or?
Or to exercise that buyback, and you're trading them in, you're getting, Safe Industries is buying those back from us. Yes, sir.
And then I guess our staff will have to undergo training to meet the warranty requirements on doing the repairs, or how does that work? Because I would imagine, in leasing, you know, not that these are not great people, but in lease arrangements, a lot of times they say, wait a minute, you didn't do that just right or this just right, we're not going to pay you the amount, but how is that going to work to make sure that we get adequate training to do lease-worthy, warranty-worthy repairs?
Yeah, our current fleet mechanics already are, work regularly with Safe Industries already, and they could, they're qualified and certified at the majority of all of those repair work. There could be some that's a little bit higher level that I can't speak to exactly on the most, on the most complicated repair that might have to be outsourced, but the majority of that repair work can be done through the warranty.
I don't have any doubt in our staff, but I know how warranties work, and when you trade it back in, they say, well, wait a minute, you know, they can kind of nitpick you, so I just want to make sure there's no gray area in making sure that we're fully instructed on how to make sure that we're told the right way to do it.
Yes, sir.
And looking at currents, I mean, are there ever times where we're getting a little nervous about having all of our stations fully equipped with adequate equipment right now?
There's times whenever our reserve fleet has dwindled down quite a bit, where we just have one or two, you know, remaining, and some, the larger concern is probably in our ladder fleet. If you get a couple of ladders go out, you have some problems with some of our ladder fleet, that's a hard one to get just another replaced or to, you know, the reserve backup. I think right now, we're just right there on, we're going to be able to stay operationally efficient, but we need some help really soon.
Yeah, well, especially since we haven't made any purchases
Yes.
in a certain period of time, that it's just putting us further behind to do that. So one way or the other, we've got to reinvest.
Yes, yeah, it's going to have to go in there.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chief, thank you for that. Paid when delivered, correct? Is there any obligation to pay for anything prior to delivery of the truck?
Depends on how we set up these, the setup of finance.
Assuming the lease.
Assuming the lease? Do you want to get up here and speak on this?
The one proposal we were looking at, that we'd start paying like a year prior, but you can work with them to structure it, but versus paying right now, we've got a couple of years before that first payment.
Okay, so on the lease option, or the lease as an option, that $1.5 million, and then the $2.1 and the $2.5 million, those would come on consecutive years, and they're one year in advance of receiving the truck?
And we're looking, I think, at the '26, '27 budget. That January 2027 would likely be the first payment.
By that time, since we're planning on a ramp up to fully resupply the inventory of the vehicles, would we expect to have some vehicles in good condition, and what would be the value of those vehicles for sellability?
That's going to be tricky, because I would probably look at our reserve fleet apparatus at that point, what can we get rid of out of there, and then kind of see what that, what those values are. Those are, right now, on average, about 17 years old. And then what I would take is our current frontline apparatus and move those to reserve fleets. We'd have a good reserve fleet, but the reserve, we could always look at it in three years from now, but at that point, you're going to have quite a few of those trucks that are going to be 20 years plus. I'm not for sure with that.
So we'd have to look at, we'd have a, would you have 10 trucks at that point that are 20 years old that you'd be looking at selling because you're replacing them?
Because we're replacing, yes, sir.
And so we don't want to speculate on the average, but you would have a, they may not be that much individually value remain because they're older, but I understand that smaller counties municipalities do buy those.
Yeah, and looking at some of the options of how to get those sold, because there are other departments that would definitely take, I mean, they're looking for anything at some point.
So in part of the analysis, could we reflect, you know, a little bit of speculation of, you know, how many of those vehicles would be sellable, and that apparatus, maybe what the average value would be expected, then we could look at that offset in that given year budget?
Okay, yes, sir.
We appreciate the work. Any other questions, Councilman?
No.
Okay. Chief, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
As far as direction that you need here today, we've directed that we would get an analysis back. You guys would be bringing something, and what would the action look like on that?
Yeah, it would be approval of a lease agreement, basically, to move forward. So I think our goal would get you to the analysis prior to that meeting. Maybe we can get questions answered and go back and forth on that before we bring the action item.
Any urgency on getting that, or could we do a discussion item that would bring back the analysis, also bring the lease agreement, and would give us a better projection of when that budget year would trigger? Right now, you're forecasting year '26, '27?
That's right. Yeah, we could run that schedule. Since we're also looking at the other debt-funded option, we'll try and bring all that back together. Really, we just wanted to see if there was a good appetite, because the group we are working with, if they, if they know kind of, kind of the direction we're heading, they might be able to go ahead and place some orders without the agreement really being finalized at this point. But January, we're targeting.
Okay. Has there been any contemplation or consideration of doing maybe a hybrid and kind of half of what you're proposing, or are we just looking at it as resupplying the entire fleet?
We're just looking to start replacing the fleet. It's not the entire quite yet. We've had, we'd have touch points, so if we could do these next few years, we'd be able to take another look to see, maybe we just go ahead and purchase one in year five or year six, and, but as long as we're still factoring in that three-year cycle, whether you're purchasing or leasing. But you could, you could do a hybrid of purchase versus lease.
Councilman?
What classifies when a engine wore out? How do you classify that?
Yeah, one of the best metrics you look at is years of service, and that can go all over the place whenever you look at industry standards, anywhere from, it could be seven years, it could be, you know, somewhere around, you know, 20 years. There's so many variables on the miles and the hours on that truck, and then the different things that's going, and is it able to maintain its safety status? Is everything running on there? There's a lot of compliance that goes in to make sure those work right. So whenever you're, whenever you're hitting some points where your repair costs are definitely bumping up into the what you've spent for that, new price for that vehicle, that's going to trigger some of those too, or looking at a strict year replacement. That's, we use the year replacement because it really closely aligned with a lot of the mileage recommendations that are out there, too. These are trucks with well over 100,000 miles that we'd be replacing, 130,000 miles on average for some of these engines that, whenever, and that's today, so I don't know where they're going to be at in three years from now when they do get replaced.
Do we still send out the engine for every fender bender?
It just depends on how that call comes in. If there's, if there's any chance somebody might be injured or some type of hazard present, you're going to get an engine response or a ladder response, and it's whatever, whatever's, whatever the caller is possibly telling dispatch and what they're hearing, and then they're trying to appropriately respond to that. Emergency, it could be the realtor, it could be some potential.
I'm asking because I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it just depends sometimes, it depends on what's going on.
I'm just wondering, because, you know, a lot of time we'll run a big old engine out, and we had a fender bender, and I hope we could say, wear and tear on the engine, maybe send out a smaller unit. I don't know. That's y'all's order.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Chief Culber, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you guys, hope much.
We're going to go ahead and move forward with that given direction, looking for a discussion item, coming back. Item 7C, we're going to revisit our drive-up feature over at the new City Hall building with Mr. Donnie Hooper.
Thank you so much, and that's exactly what we'd like to do today, is just talk a little bit about, kind of revisit the drive-through that was originally intended for the new City Hall.
Hey, Donnie, give us just one quick.
I want a point of order. I thought we already talked about this, and I thought we said no, didn't we?
So...
I'm just asking.
Right. So let me attempt to answer that. So as a point of order clarification, we removed the existing drive-up feature on the City Hall building. We've almost, we've reached substantial completion. Staff is bringing it, at staff's request, bringing it back to council for reconsideration, given the budget that we've got, as a feature that would assist with customer service. Am I saying that right?
That's correct, and we really, we're not pushing it either way. We, there was a discussion that the mayor and I had a couple of weeks ago with Jerry Danforth, and we were just saying, maybe we need to bring it back, just to discuss it and let you know what we've heard from some of our citizens and some of the concerns that were surrounding that. So, and we're not, like I said, we're not pushing it either way, just wanted to put it before you one last time.
All right.
Before we completed our project over there. So the purpose of this presentation is to revisit the additional drive-up service there that we had originally had planned in the new City Hall, discuss some of the customer service benefits of that, and obtain some direction from council at the conclusion of this presentation. And again, as I mentioned, there was a discussion that took place just a few weeks ago where we were talking about the positives and negatives of that, some of the feedback that we'd received from some of our citizens. The history of this is that that was value-engineered and taken out of the project, as well as the parking garage. There were some other items that were taken out of the project as well, such as, if I remember right, there was some fencing that was taken out, some different brick that was taken out on Johnson Street, and some other minor things that were during those discussions. The status update, by the way, on this construction project is on time. We're still scheduled to move into it in January, and as of right now, and as a fact, they were assembling furniture when I was over there last Friday and putting that in some of the offices over there. Some of the concerns that came up, both from citizens and from staff, and the reason we wanted to kind of revisit this was there were some different things that customers were even telling us, too, elderly, senior citizens, disabled customers, not having a convenient way to pay their utility bills, and we've been reminded of that over the past year, even here at the current City Hall, watching some people come in, or they would say, is there an easier way for me to get into the building, or an easy way for me to come in and pay my utility bills? Also, more convenient for parents with small children, some of our weather events that we have around here are pretty horrendous, and they still have to unload kids, get them out of the car, bring them into the building. And some customers, and I'm going to bring up one as an example, would be my mother. She just likes to have a piece of paper and a check, and she wants to put that somewhere that she can send that to some person and get that to them. But she's 88 years old, and she would have a very difficult time going up steps and getting into a building. Parking is going to be a little bit limited out there. We do have, the amount of parking spaces that we have there are adequate for staff, it's adequate for some other things, but I'll talk to you about that a little bit in the next slide as we get past the design. It does provide good customer service, we feel like, and increases parking spaces. For the lease spacing areas, as, you know, you go back to the, taking the parking garage away, we have some lease spaces, and about 40,000 square feet of lease spacing available in that City Hall, and we want to be able to have those tenants, there's already some discussions going on with some possible tenants there, and we want them to be able to have some parking as well. The drive-through would at least put some vehicles in the parking lanes of the drive-through. The timing of it, we'd be able to use the existing contractor if we decided to change our position on that. It would be more costly to construct that at a later date if some other future council or someone else wanted to redo that, we know it's going to be more expensive. This is just a look back at the City Hall, that's looking over, we see the Sixth Street on there, just to remind you where that drive-through was proposed to be. Sixth Street is being constructed right now, and that would go on that side of the building. This is what it would look like in the original drawings, and one thing that we have gone back and looked at as well, and it's another reason for bringing it back, too, is that if we could reduce that down to just two lanes instead of the three, it would also open up, if you look at this picture here, it would open up a couple of drive lanes for vehicles to go back and forth across there. So the cost of that originally was around 300,000, we're estimating that'd be around 500,000 now. If there is some direction from council to do this, and again, that's a big if, we could change that design and bring back the actual construction cost back to council, and you could take a look at it that way. We don't have an actual cost on it. I will say that the redesign for two bays was done at no cost by the contractor now, just so we could take a look at it and have something that we could say, okay, if we reduce that scope a little bit, what would it cost us? The funding is available in the project, we have the capacity for a change order to be issued to pay for that. If we chose to do that, the construction timeline would begin in February, it would be completed by the end of April, by May. So that's really all we wanted to do, just follow up on what we discussed with the mayor and with some other folks, that we'd bring that back to and let you ask questions. Jerry's out of town, so if he asks me too many tough questions, I probably won't be able to answer him, but I'll try to do the best I can if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. Questions for Donnie, Council?
When you say increases parking spaces available, you're just saying that's because you're using the drive-through?
Yeah, I'm just saying that some of the vehicles that take up a lot of the parking spaces here at City Hall right now are people coming inside to pay their water bill.
And this was, Donnie, this was brought, I guess, brought back up. You said we've had feedback from...
There has been some feedback, yes, there has.
As far as ease of paying their bill, not wanting to get out, that kind of thing?
Correct, and we've also, I think, just witnessing it too myself, I've witnessed it a few times where people were trying to make their way into the building, and that's what they were coming in to do, is pay their water bill.
Y'all have any idea of the numbers? I mean, do y'all look at the numbers of the people who come in and pay like downstairs?
I don't have those, but I would, we can get them.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
So we're looking at is trying to reduce maybe the traffic inside the building, free up parking spaces, and just provide, make it more convenient.
I think, I think more of the approach is for a customer service approach more than anything.
Councilman?
My question goes back to the same discussion we had earlier, is, in my opinion, how they pay their Atmos bill, how they pay their XL bill, all the other bills, they got to go down and go inside and pay. This is a half-million-dollar great deal, I mean, but we're sort of tight. We don't need to be throwing money. I mean, if all my strip potholes were filled up and all my parks were perfect and everything else, I might say we can do that, but I'd say at this point in time, my opinion is, let's go back and look at it maybe at a later time. I mean, half a million dollars, we balked at it at 300,000 six months ago, and with it going up 200, I might back again, you know? So that's just my thought.
Donnie, how much money is left if we have for 500,000 still in the budget?
I don't know that number off the top of my head right now, but I know that we looked at the capacity that we had as far as the overall budget, what we've spent, and if we had the capacity to do the change order within that 25%, and it fit that. I just don't know the exact number. We could get it, though.
So that's what you're looking at, is some of the stuff that we value engineered or helped reduce the cost. Now that we, they've come in at a good number, you've got that money to say, hey, maybe we can come back and revisit that.
Yeah, we have some contingency that we know is going to have to go to something, and it has to go to something at City Hall. I mean, we know that, and that was the other piece of this why this was brought up, too. Gotcha.
Councilman?
So are there any other ways that people can pay their water bills? Is the only, I mean, you can either mail it to us, you can go online?
They can go online.
Any other local, any other local places you can go to pay the water bill? Where, where's that?
I believe it's United Supermarkets, Staxel, and yes, I believe that means part of it.
So there's already other places locally that people can, can do that. And then do other utilities have, I mean, does, when XL, AT&amp;T, Atmos, do they have places where people can walk up and pay their bill to an individual or person? I mean, other utilities?
I couldn't speak to that.
Yeah, I'm just not familiar with it. It seems like you mail it in.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And then can other, I mean, I thought we did not have drive, we did not, the standards say we don't have drive-throughs in downtown. I mean, if somebody else wanted to come in, unless there's an exception to it.
So, that was amended, I think, in 2014, right around the time Toot and Totem came forward with their proposal for a drive-through.
Okay, so now anybody can have a drive-through downtown if they want to?
Yeah, based on certain standards through the DODs Board.
Okay. Well, I don't know. It just seemed to me that, I mean, we have a, when we went, not in this past year's budget, but the previous year's budget, I mean, it seems it's pretty much a standard in most places where, you know, as much as I'm sure, you know, you mail in a bill, there's different ways to pay the bill, you know, I mean, just adding additional expense for people to pay the bill in the building or others, or staffing, I don't know how the staffing would work. I think that's why we kind of, you know, determined, you know, can there be a savings? And, I mean, if people are paying other bills electronically, credit card, not going in person, why can't we do that with, with the water utility bills here?
Sure.
And maybe from a staffing standpoint, other type of standard, I just think, I just, you know, don't, you know, maybe we reward people that pay electronically because that cuts down our cost? Or maybe there should be, I mean, if we want to have a drive-through there, maybe there's a cert, because it's going to be an additional cost for us to do it, maybe there's a surcharge or something. Either rewarding people that, that pay in a way that saves us money, or saying, well, we'd be glad to have these things here, but if you want to pay in person or do other things, it's a lot of staffing. I'm guessing that the drive-through will not handle the, 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 the people downstairs, they handle not only the billing, but the, the public records, I guess? What else are they doing downstairs for?
Vital statistics.
Vital statistics. That would not be handled through the drive-through, would it?
Um, especially parts of it, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, I mean, yeah, I would just wonder how long that would, that would take. So, I, I just see from a cost efficiency standpoint, be the same thing we talked about in last year's budget. I mean, if we can, if we can do ways where people, encouraging people to use electronics the way they pay every other bill that they have, to do this the same, which is, you know, I think, save us money in operational and income and really not merit having a drive-through there.
You have something?
Sure.
No?
I would like to say, though, in even getting a response that is, is the same directive that, that we got previously, it's very appropriate for staff to continue to, to bring things back to council for reconsideration, especially when staff's done a good job of managing the funds. And so, when we, when we have a cost savings like that, and you guys have discussed it and say this would be the best value of, of the money that we have, it fits within the given criteria, restrictions, et cetera. So, I'm good with having the, the discussion out here to get the no. I, I want to appreciate the discussion, though, from staff. So, we in no way want to push back in, you know, we don't have a consideration. We, we are, even if the reconsideration's the same. So, thank you for bringing it back.
Absolutely.
Counsel, I would ask if, if we're, if we're comfortable with where we're at with the building as, as approved?
Yeah, I don't have a desire to...
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rupert.
Thank you.
I would like to thank staff for the hard work. Always, always bring them back.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Item 7D. So, we do have Mr. Fairley here in the back, and so this is an, an update on AEDC. So, previous meeting, we, we had resignation from board members. We were able to place temporary board members. We took an opportunity to place two council members. So, to restate it again, we have no intention of leaving these council members any longer than we need to. Mr. Smith is a former council member. He was just unlucky and happened to be in the crowd that day, and we called upon him and asked for his help. Mr. Fairley and I had visited privately, previously, about his willingness to get in and, and what we're saying, clean up the mess. And so, we defined the mess as articles that we were struggling to get amendments to and get agreements with collaboration, that these were reasonable and needed. What do those do to bylaws? Now that the bylaws need to be updated when you change an article of incorporation? And so, from there, we, we were looking at some protocols, procedures, what, what are we doing in the way that we're approving the funds that are going out? That also had in it a line item budget. And so, a lot of work there to be done. What we felt like as council is that trying to appoint four new board members at that given time to go in and do all this wasn't real fair to those who had applied. So, we asked for all those who had applied to reconsider, now that you know kind of what you're getting into and, and the deficit that we're working from. Do you still want to serve in this capacity? And then, we opened it back up until December 4th for new applicants. Today, the last one I saw was 55. So, I believe we have 55 individuals that have volunteered to, to work in this capacity. I also know that council still has the right to nominate anyone that, that may or may not be on that applicant form. And so, the good news is, is we had our temporary board meet. They did appoint a chair. That's why Mr. Fairley is here. He is the board chair of our AEDC temporarily, and they are making progress. We also have taken our time with these amendments to the articles because they're important. It's an important document. We take it serious, and, and once again, we want to do no harm. And so, in the, in the, the willingness to work together, I think the best thing we could do is get an update from our board chair, hear how the meeting went, what is, what, what are their expectations? What do they feel like they can accomplish here in the next month? And then, we need direction from council here later.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Question I have, and don't get me wrong, I'm just asking this. With two of our council members on the AEDC board right now?
Correct.
Will they be voting when we have a vote to do? That's point of order I would like to ask.
Yeah, so it's a unique situation to have two council members serving on two boards, so we have quorums and all sorts of other issues. So, Mr. City Attorney, if, if you want to give us any caution, please do.
I think you'll be okay. If something comes up, though, we'll catch it as it goes, because if it's going to pass anyway, then it doesn't matter. You only have two on there. So, if it's, you know, if it was unanimous or something, if it were going to pass, then even if there was a conflict, it wouldn't apply. So, that's a good question.
Okay. So, great question, and it goes to, I'd say, the, the attitude, the, the respect that we're trying to work within this, that we are following the rules, we are following all of the steps and procedures, we are going by the book. So, Mr. Fairley, I'd ask if you don't mind coming up here, we would, we would hand the microphone over to you and just let you give us kind of your thoughts and a brief update.
Thank you. Okay, that's okay. First ever city council meeting of my life.
Welcome.
First time ever in this room, I think. So, yeah, I mean, I'll give a little quick update, and I have a couple of things I could, could take some input from you on. I think first I would give a, just a right now, here and now, short-term update, because there's been, you know, some comments made that maybe, you know, we have a disaster, and you guys have ruined the, you know, the EDC, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm going to tell you, the, the morning after I was appointed, the board where you said, you asked me, and I said no, and you did it anyway, that meeting? And then, I text you that night and said, what, excuse me, the hell are you doing? And then, we slept. And the first thing I did the next morning was call Kevin Carter. And we spent a couple hours, I was out of town, so I, I couldn't see him in person, but we spent a couple hours on the phone and just began to get to know each other. I didn't know Kevin. I'd met him shaking his hand a time or two, but, but we probably had never spoken, you know, 20 words. The first thing I asked Kevin was, how was he doing? Just as a human. The second thing I asked Kevin was, have we, are we in trouble, you know, with any, you know, deals? And, you know, Kevin ultimately told me, no. There was some discussion, but in the short term, I think the AEDC is just fine. I, I don't think we have any deals that even are at risk. We certainly don't have any deals that are lost, deals that we thought were done are still done. You know, there's a little bit of churn, you know, even around the state, because some of, you know, Kevin's friends have gotten involved and spoken into this thing, so it's created a little bit of drama. But, and, and the bottom line is the AEDC is just fine, and going forward, just fine. I, I know you, you have a few things slowed down, you know, with your process of kind of wanting to know what's going on. I think those things are just fine. They, you know, they probably make Kevin and team, you know, slow a few things down, but I don't think there's anything that's getting done, that needs to get done, that isn't getting done. I don't think there's any trips taken that aren't being taken. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's anything that needs to be done and that isn't in good shape. And so, that's my, you know, my short-term picture of how it's going. There's, there's certainly no, not even catastrophe. I frankly don't really think there's a big problem. In a little bit the longer term, I'll tell you that what I'm doing is just really what I do in my business. When we go in to work for a new client, we just begin digging in and mostly listening. And I started that morning on the phone with Kevin. The first time we talked was two hours. And I've spent a lot of hours with Kevin, a lot, a lot of hours. He's probably already really maybe tired of me. And I say that jokingly. We've had, I think, a lot of good meetings. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes the guy who doesn't know anything, and I don't know anything about the AEDC world, you know, they've got their own language, and they've got their own terms, and they've got their own thinking, but sometimes the guy that doesn't know all that sees things a little differently than people who are there every day and live in those paradigms see. And I can tell you that I'm looking at an AEDC that, from where I stand right now, can, can be dramatically, dramatically improved. I'll hold back, I have some much stronger things that are in my mind, but I think it's just a little, it's a little earlier, it's a little early for me to say those things. But you guys can, you know, kind of, you can, you could fire me anytime. I think that's a healthy thing. I've been in a position my whole life to get fired any day by my clients. But until then, I'm going to do this job like with, with every bit of my energy. And, and I'm finding things that I think need a, a, a reset and a rethink and a lot of attention. And already, my mind is going toward what those things could be, but I'll, I'll come back to those later. There, in my, in our first meeting, my first ever public meeting, you know, I'd be, I was voted or nominated, or whatever the word is, chairman. And so, then, you know, I'm supposed to do the things chairman do in meetings, but I, first I had to ask what these jobs are, and, you know, Kevin told us. And I didn't know what to do, you know? I don't know the protocol, and I don't know who's supposed to say what and what order, and, and it was kind of funny, I think, a little bit. A lot of things I don't recognize. But I do recognize bullshit when I see it. And I think a lot of it's kind of flying around from a lot of places. And so, we'll see how long I last with you, but I'm going to do my best and call things, you know, kind of like I see them. And I, I think, I think the AEDC is, is really important for our city, but I think it can do things it's never thought about, ever thought about doing in our city, even though it's done some, it's done some really good things. So, I'll go on to, any questions before I go on?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I just want it really clear that y'all have stated, there are no problem, we're not losing business from the AEDC, the council's not pushing business away. After I've read all these op-eds, all the social media, media, other places, we are in good footing right now, correct?
Yeah, we're in good footing. I, I, I followed the question I had up for Kevin in private that day with that question in the meeting, public. It was the last bit of business in the meeting, and just before I left, you, you kind of asked a question really first, you know, Josh, and, and then I followed up and articulated it just a little more, you know, yes, no-ish. And yeah, Kevin confirmed again that he thinks everything is fine and that, and that we don't have any problem. We're not...
That's, that's the best news I've heard, because what's going through social media and op-eds is, we lost our wheels, we crashed and burned, and I'm glad to hear we're in good shape, that we can build where we're at and go forward. Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely aren't crashing. I don't, I don't frankly think we're even all that, I'm not sure how wobbly we are. So, as far as, I'm going to tell you, my thoughts about the future are different than the thoughts of the past, but as far as looking as to what we've been, the, I, I think, I think everything is just fine. I think everything's just fine. I asked Kevin, are there people out there at risk that I need to get on an airplane and go see? And he said, no. So, I think, I think, I think everything that he has going is still going just fine. And there's people around the state interested in what's going on in Amarillo. You know, it's a little messy, and, and when the, when the head of the state association says everyone does business this way, like, I think, I think people ought to be paying attention to that. So, you know, we'll get to that eventually, but now I think everything is fine.
One thing that I would say, so, you, you do not come to the table with years or tenure of sitting on the AEDC board. You're unfamiliar with some board procedures. You in no way are unfamiliar with business, ethics, sales, marketing, budgets, finance, anything like that. I mean, you, you, you come with a proven track record in your business dealings and your abilities to lead. What we hired you for, and what I nominated you for that this council was willing to support, is we needed strong leadership, and we needed to tell our public and those people that have invested and continue to invest those tax dollars into the AEDC, that we have a plan and that we will walk this out the right way. Now, it may not look as professional as everyone would like, and we are going to have conversations in public. And that takes criticism, and that comes with the territory. But the, the right path forward is the path that we're on. So, speak a little bit to maybe your disagreements with me. So, we've had a few conversations where, you know, perhaps the articles and the amendments of the articles, there's, there's something in there that I know you had said, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this. And then also, maybe on the bylaws, we have another discussion item coming up that we'll invite you to, to participate in. But I just think, setting the stage, it's important to know that what I'm seeking to have is legitimate, organic collaboration with a healthy board, and it is temporary, but the way that this board works and cleans up this mess sets us up for success or failure for the next board.
Yeah. Okay, so, that's where I was going to go next. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we have disagreement, but to reference what Cole was talking about, I called him on Saturday, Sunday, I can't remember what day. And I'm finally getting my head around first the, sorry, not the bylaws, but the...
Articles of amendment?
Articles. For some reason, I keep wanting to call, call the amendments, but the articles. And I think some of that would help me, and I, I asked you this, and you answered for you, and I think it would be good for, for maybe you all to know what I'm assuming, because going forward, I think, will obviously be affected by what I'm thinking. But there's been a lot of good work done on the articles. There's just a lot of cleanup and little things and references to places in the statutes that need to be added and tuned up, and little numbers are different, and there's just a lot, been a lot of good work, probably stuff that should have been done, you know, you know, between now and then, when it was start, when it was written. And I, I think the AEDC's attorney and George have collaborated well and worked through several iterations. But the, to me, what the biggest, I think most of that is non-structural. What I would say in a, in a legal discussion about a contract is, is non-structural. It's, it's just tidying things up. The, the, the main structural change to the articles is to, is the discussion about what kind of budget type of decisions, you know, how they should get treated. Like, can, can, can we say, these are okay, once they're agreed by you all, and they can go execute? And then, are there some that are like, you got to come back on all of these? Like, one example of that, the second, the latter, is all, every deal the AEDC does right now, no matter, no matter what happens, they got to bring it back here, and you all have to approve it. That certainly should stay. But I think that we could simplify that. There's, there's some complexity in that document that I think, I think we could make it a lot simpler. And the complexity of that document then makes the bylaws more complicated to me than they could be. If we could agree that this, the, the problem that you guys had with the Range deal, which is what started this discussion, you probably, you had some problem that they asked for 100 and gave 750. But, but setting that aside, the way they were able to do that is they were able to gather money from different parts of the budget and say, okay, I got 750. And my thought is that we could fix that really simply by, since you get to approve the budget, and you can approve the budget at whatever level you want. A council five years from now, they may want a different level of budget approval. Like, you may say, just tell me office expenses are 50 grand. I don't care about how many paper clips and pencils and pieces of paper. But at whatever level you guys need the budget to look like, I feel like what we could say is, the, the AEDC can't go beyond the line item level of a budget without your approval. Or I may even put like a 5% buffer, and I may say, you, you, you can go beyond 5% or 2% or 10, 10's too much. But, and as long as you stay with that, at the line item level, because that's not what the articles used to say, which is kind of what made them feel like they, you know, could do that. I know that's a disputed point as to whether they could have, but setting that aside, I feel like we could, we could in very simple order say, you get to approve the budget once it's approved at the line item level, the AEDC can't go past it. And that way, I feel like that's really tight. And doing that, that simply would turn paragraphs into sentences, and then it would make the bylaw discussion, which I, which I would get to later, because it will dramatically have to change even from the version we have now, simplified. So, what I called Cole to do was ask if, could we take the simpler approach, and could I go back to our... go back to our attorney and write the draft of the document that way? And then bring the attorneys and probably some of you or I guess one or two of you back together? And I think once we, I think we could do that and I think we'd have that done by the end of the week. And I think it, then it could make the bylaw discussion just more streamlined and, and smooth, so.
So one, one thing in our discussion was, I wanted to make it clear to you that George Hyde, the attorney that we've hired, i- is not the one that we need approval from. Uh, you need this council's approval. George Hyde is making recommendations, he's taking direction. Uh, quite frankly, some of the direction he took from this council was show us what we can do. Like we're unsure as to how rigid this document could be, not how rigid it should be or has to be. So some of the stuff that he's produced, um, we intend to have a collaborative effort with you and with your board. And I think that in the appropriateness, I visited with our city manager earlier today, Mr. Path, it is more appropriate for this body up on the dais to dictate those, uh, articles and to make sure that the structure is in place legally that we want to set these guardrails and parameters. Then we believe it's more, uh, appropriate for your board and your staff to help and assist with everything from the way the budget is line items and putting those amounts in and helping to, um, I guess I would say describe those items that are in the bylaws, define those bylaws so that we avoid this issue of, oh, this is so cumbersome, this is so, um, laborious, like where you're just, you're making it where we're not gonna be able to operate efficiently. That's not our goal. And so I believe that in this exercise, um, Atkins would do you a good job and we can hand this back over to you. What we need to do is we need to see if we can move forward with the articles. Um, and what I'm hearing you say is, is that Atkins has said multiple times, this seems reasonable, this seems reasonable. There were a few things on the articles that you would like to bring back. So at this point, you would take the articles to Atkins, you, staff, your board would meet one more time, then we would receive them, we could get them in plenty of time. Uh, Mr. Hyde has kind of done what he needs to do, I believe. There could be some feedback from him on advisement and then we would put these up for a vote. Now, that really looks more like January, you could probably get done what you need to in a week, but we don't meet again till January. However, bylaws could be working at that time because we could give you direction here today for you to go forward with the bylaws and the changes that you want.
I'm completely in agreement. I think that's good.
So real quick, council, am I going a wrong direction? Am I going a good direction? And, and we're here to get an update, but we're also here to engage, so just open it up for a little bit of discussion.
No, I think it's good. Uh, my only question is, you know, if we adopt the bylaws, as you say, you know, to have the, the overall budget approved and then not to go above the line items, uh, I'd be curious with Kevin and his group to say, do we need to redo the budget? Does it need to be relooked at on the, from the original one that was submitted, uh, or not? I mean, hopefully it's no, uh, but I would say that that probably needs to be looked at because we have yet to approve the budget as is. So, I mean, I think that's another step that we need to look at for sure.
So could I, I think that's a very good point and, and Don, what I think I would do is let you guys decide that. Like look at that budget and say, am I good with, if this is the rules? And if you're like, no, I need a little more detail right here, I need three sub-line items, but I, cause ultimately you guys, that's, that's as it, as it should be, that's your call and then they're gonna have to live by it. So I look at that thing and feel like, okay, I can live with all these line items, this is what they're gonna be held accountable to, I go ahead. But if there's some places that you'd say, eh, I'd like that to be broken down into two or three things. I, I, I'll tell you, there's some sloshiness and there, there just is. You know, like it, it's loose, it's loose. And I, I won't betray confidential conversations, but this thing is, is too loose. And I, and I will say, I didn't know John Atkins, in fact, I would have forgot his last name if you hadn't have said it. He was great the times I've seen him, talked to him and, um, very reasonable, very, nope, I think they should get this, talking about you all, so I, I, I think he's doing, you know, good. I, I don't think this will be that hard. I do think we need till January just cause of holidays, but-
Right.
I think we could be ready to have something that you guys can look at.
Councilman, can you direct, uh, do we wanna redirect anything? Can, can you give some feedback, Councilman Simpson?
Well, I, I do and I appreciate you, you know, you bringing that up. I think, I think at least my goal in this whole thing has been, we can look at the articles of incorporation. I mean, if somebody's advising this, that's the best way to go, but let's make sure that we don't do anything that hampers, causes problems or, or puts us in a disadvantage in economic development against others, because that's really, you know, that, that's not gonna be productive. Uh, so, you know, and I think simplifying it, to me, the, the, the complicated problem was gonna be not what we're necessarily put in the articles of incorporation, but how is this all gonna work and who's got to do what and how do we do it and what comes and what doesn't go? Um, so I appreciate, you know, the idea of trying to simplify it. One, one thing I think and, and I say here as, as a council, of course, there's a couple of members that are serving on the EDC. This is where as a council member, I'm, I'm really gonna depend on the, you know, the, the interim board, the, the, the AEDC staff and the city staff to help me make sure, to make sure that we're all on the same page and we understand how this is gonna, you know, work going forward to be able to advise this. Because to me, I mean, I could think it's the greatest thing in the world, but if the staff says, wait a minute, we're not clear on this, to make sure that all the parties, not only the, the volunteer party and the elected parties, but the staff, that we're all on one page and that we're very clear on how this is gonna work going forward and there's a comfort level and a clear, a clear path so that, that everybody's clear on how we're gonna operate and there, there's as, as little possibility for things to fall through the cracks as they may have fallen through before.
Yeah, that's, I think that's, is it okay if I call you, Don? It's okay? I will call you last-
Yeah, that's better than I've called sometimes, so yeah, that'll, that'll work.
I could, I could call you Councilman Simpson, is that the right title?
Sure.
All right. I, I, I think the thing Cole just described of, of us kind of talking through conceptually and agreeing and then sending the lawyers to write it is like, it, it's the best way. And I think it's, I think it's uniquely valuable that you guys put two people on, on that board, especially for this period of time. There were some versions of these, I, I've looked at all of the iterations from the beginning that, that I don't think were workable. Like I, I don't, I don't, I think people would have been hampered, you know, too much. But I think we're really close to a place that we need to take, make one good move towards simplification and, um, I, I don't think there's any risk of, uh, of, of things being too con, I, I, I think more things needed to be tightened up and, um, but I don't, I don't think we'll overdo it. We, Cole and I talked about this before this ever came up, that you had a situation where you, you got uncomfortable with that situation. I mean, you, there was, trust was missing and you don't wanna write bylaws assuming you're not trusting, you know, that. Like, like, because eventually you're gonna trust them again, whoever they are, and you wanna write bylaws that let them, you know, kinda, you, you wanna let them fly with some accountability. So although I, I would predict we should fly some different directions in the future, but we'll get to that later.
Real good. So Councilman Simpson, I hear where you're coming from. Um, I can't help but infer a little bit that you still feel maybe that we need to map out a direction. I feel like we mapped it out pretty good, so, uh, maybe if I summarize, restate, I want, I want clarity here today. What, what we can't have is another meeting where we really don't know, uh, you know, like, no, we, we're mapping it out, we're, we're putting it on the, we've talked it through, um, the collaboration's gonna happen. So at this point, Mr. Hyde's done, done his job, he's given us the articles, we know what they look like. Nobody, nobody's questioning these that is reading them. Now whether you agree with them or not, you can see what they are. Uh, Mr. Atkins has advised you and your board that, you know, several of these things are good, you have a few issues, um, he may have some stuff. We invite you to allow him and your board to continue to finalize that document and bring it back to us in January for approval. So you could bring it back right after the first of the year, we're not meeting till January 14th. Our expectation should be that we have the articles finalized, ready to vote on January 14th. Um, in the meantime, you are gonna take direction from this council that we invite you to not redraw, but amend and, and, and participate in those bylaws. Some of the bylaws you, you may wanna work on are the original bylaws that you know just need to change per your advisor. Some of the bylaws may be what Mr. Hyde put out that you don't like, so I wanna strike or whatever. You and your staff as well as your board are gonna bring back those bylaws at the same time. We would like, if it's okay, we would love for Mr. Carter to go ahead and complete the budget. Um, so there shouldn't be any reason that they don't know what their anticipated expenditures are for this next year, how we're wanting to put those down and we would invite those to be brought back so that if it is a $50,000 request for office supplies, we know the way you'd like to ask. Maybe you don't wanna stipulate Office Max, maybe you just wanna say office supplies. We're okay with that, uh, as a body. So we don't want you to feel like we're gonna be so dogmatic and hard to get along with that we're never gonna get a budget approved. We need to get a budget approved, there shouldn't be any reason, if you haven't already, to go ahead and continue that and bring that back. So contractual obligations, uh, overhead, salaries, wages, and then, you know, advertising marketing, those other single line item membership budgets that we're all familiar with now. Uh, outside of that, then we're really relying on you and Mr. Smith and, and Mr. Patel, um, to help assist in, what do you mean by tightening up? What are you wanting to really, uh, hold accountable? What do you, what, how do we, how do we get this entity to fly better? And, and, and so not saying that, um, we haven't done a fantastic job in certain areas and that there hasn't been wins, there's definitely some trophies on the wall. Everything can be improved upon, we've gone through this exercise, how do we continue to improve? And, and so that to me is what it looks like in having this mess cleaned up in January with the readiness to appoint a new board.
Okay. So you'd like me to have the bylaws ready by also the next board meeting?
Well, I, I-
We can try.
I feel like you could. Uh, January 14th is a long time and so-
If it wasn't for holidays, I'd say no brainer. And it might be, we'll work toward that.
Well-
Let's assume we're gonna get that done.
Okay, if they're not ready then, or perhaps maybe they're not ready to be voted on or adopted, the rough draft could be so that we would at least at that time engage in a productive conversation.
It may be completely possible.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd just like to say is just, just to maybe look at being totally transparent about all this is that, you know, if we can get whatever, because to be honest with you, I've held off on digging in because it seems to change every two weeks. I mean, we've had change after change after change after change. And, and not that I don't wanna spend all my time reading this, but it, it's not productive if I'm not reading, okay, what is the final ver, what are we actually looking at putting out instead of come out? So what I might recommend is if we can set a target for it being available to us and the public on the 14th, maybe as a discussion item so that, and then maybe looking at a vote on the, on, you know, two weeks later, just to make sure that we've gone transparent through this, that it's, that it's out there, that, you know, if we do come up to the last minute and we, and we, we don't get it until a few days before, we're not rushing and more importantly, the, the public's not rushing through this and it gives us an extra two weeks where this is out there, people can look at it, we can look at it and, and go from there.
I think we can totally do that. The only thing I would ask is that I may, I think there'll need to be a little more discussion on our way to the 14th. So if that's you, Cole, or whoever it would be, I would like to be able to come back and say, okay, I got this draft and, and I have seven things I just think we need to talk through. Is it appropriate that I-
So, so it's always appropriate for chair to chair to, to communicate. However, you have two council members that, um, are sitting on that board and so they, they are the-
You can only talk to one of them at a time, right?
Well, they are, they are the-
Other topic?
They're the individuals that, that we have the, the greatest level of faith in and-
So you want me to go back to them instead of you?
So, um, let me ask, uh, our attorney, um, if, if chair to chair is can, you know, communicating and he's also speaking to, we don't have any quorums, correct, as, as the, the director or as the board chair?
I would refrain from that.
Okay.
Um, I think you should work with the council that you have, um, just to be safe, to avoid any perception.
So you mean, when I come back to talk, I shouldn't talk to Don or Josh?
Well, no, if we have a, if we have a posted meeting, you're fine. It's, it's more just, um, you've gotta be careful about, about sharing deliberations you're having with them with, with, with the mayor if he's not involved. So in other words, if it's not a posted meeting, you gotta be careful about that, so.
So I, I would say this, we're gonna leave it up to you to choose.
Okay.
So if, if you would like to, to directly communicate with me, that's fine, then I'm gonna assume that you're not speaking to either of my other two council members about those specific topics and what you'd like to do on them. However, if you wanna work with Josh or Don, either one would be fine.
But now, in a, in a posted meeting, like we're gonna have another meeting, it's open discussion. So that's what I would suggest is you're gonna get, we're paying for your buck going here and then in our meeting at the EDC, we can all sit around and talk.
Yeah, so that would be true and, and you and I being able to work through it, especially with the, the Hyde and the Atkins piece.
Okay. I think we probably won't have that meeting, we had quasi-plan.
Okay.
Because now that we're gonna reset, we just need to do some work first.
Okay.
I, one additional thing I would just ask is if, whoever's you're, we're working with on here, that we also include the city manager in these conversations just so he's in the loop from the city perspective on the, you know, on the staff to, to make sure, you know, I don't, to make sure that he's got a good understanding of how this is moving forward as well.
Yeah, so the, um, the, the consideration there's not a problem and, and I, I try to keep our city manager totally up to date on a lot of my conversations and, and where we're at and expectations. So, um, as much as that can be disseminated without violating anything, we'll, we'll do it. Councilman Kraft, I saw you had something.
Go ahead, Don, if you had something on that.
Well, I was just gonna comment on that, I, I'm all about looping in the city manager, but this really had the, and I don't mean this in any way, don't hear it any other way, but this doesn't have anything to do with you, correct? The EDC?
Well, one, one, one nice aspect to be if, if we, since we are the fiscal agent, um, if there are matters, if the bylaws start to address when it comes to fiscal purpose, it'd be good for us to be clued on those, cause obviously we'll, we'll be serving that role, so that, that could be good, be clued in on those pieces.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, and, but our job does involve oversight of the EDC, he's our advisor. That's what the city manager does, advises. So I, I would, I would just like to make sure that, that our chief advisor's in the loop.
I'm also, I'm also an ex-official on the board as well and so I, I could be a part of that for that purpose as well.
Yeah. Good communication.
Um, so let me get this straight, so before we amend these bylaws, I mean, we gotta have articles in place first, right? Or is the goal to do all that at one time?
No, I think the goal would be to, to have the articles ready to vote on January 14th with everything coming back so that the bylaws and the budget and any of the other ideas, suggestions you have are part of a discussion item. Those could be discussed that day and then ready to be voted on, on the 28th. So you'd still have a two-step, uh, process there, thus giving plenty of time for everybody to get comfortable and the public to understand what we're doing.
Sounds good.
Okay, so not to, not to kinda belabor us here a little bit, but I feel like we had a good discussion. Um, we also kinda looped down to item 7E, uh, and, you know, how the articles and incorporation of bylaws, so taking that up as a separate item, keeping Mr. Fairley's attention here. Do you have anything specific that you wanna add to this or do you feel like we've got you to a, kind of a good stopping point?
Yeah, no, I, I feel good.
Okay.
Anything else specific?
Um, okay, so while you're here, I do wanna take up item 7F, uh, just to get your opinion on this. And then I think what we probably will do is we'll take a quick recess and then we'll come back to take up the, uh, outside council. Um, so on this, board selection. Um, now, I, I know you didn't even wanna serve, uh, I appreciate your leadership and your willingness to serve. Um, I also find it humorous that like, you know, as a campaign donor, uh, this would somehow be, uh, a gift to you to, to ask you to come and help us. And I know that this is in no way a, a promotion or a benefit to you and so we are in your, your debt, um, and we appreciate you and we appreciate all of the board members that are leading and the additional time for council to be willing to go and do this. So, um, as soon as we can get everybody permanently placed, uh, let's assume for now that we, we are placing all four board members. We just mapped this out all the way to the 28th. Would it be appropriate in, in your opinion to try to place board members in February? And then council, what does that look like to you, especially to you two that are serving? Um, can you serve through January and then we have a new board in place in February?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Councilmember Simpson, what do you, what are you feeling like on how fast this train's moving and, and is that a good timeframe?
Well, I do think to help, you know, and, and I'm glad to hear that things are continuing to move forward, you know, that type of thing. But I, I do know that, you know, and we've, we've even heard from our own advisor that we hire to advise us and, and the EDC on how to move in forward, you know, making, making sure whatever, and I'm glad nobody thinks that anything's going on here, this is just normal, that type of thing.
normal, that type of thing. But to me, the, the key part is getting back to normalcy as soon as possible. Articles of incorporation is one and getting the, but getting the board that's going to be there full-time, I think is two. I don't think we need to do it to rush it just for rushing it, but I don't think it needs to be something, I, I think your timeframe would work out fine.
And I, I would just say the, the, the way that we take this one step at a time allows us to correct if we, if we don't step as straightly as we'd like to. So I, I definitely don't feel like it is, it's wisdom to appoint a new board while we're currently doing this. So I would like to have all of this finalized and agreed upon and, and ultimately my, the win in this would be for Mr. Carter and Mr. Atkins to be here presenting this, saying, we agree, we think, I mean, we can do this, we, we can work here, let's go to work. And so at that point where we are, let's go to work, we as a council would be ready to go ahead and place the, the permanent board. So we have 55 names. I would ask if council wants to direct this conversation in any way, right now, we can look at it as just a broad open nomination, just like we always do. You bring a nomination yourself or you select one of the applicants and, and you nominate. However, we have other opportunities. You could do interviews with these individuals, you could vet them in other ways. And then we also could do like a, a tier selection process. Do we have any appetite or need for any of that or do we feel like we can, we can kind of use standard protocol? Yes, sir?
I was just thinking, just out loud, if we came up, there's 55. If each one of us came up with a top 10, however that process is, if we want to interview them individually, that's great, whatever we want to do to come up with our top 10. That way, when we come in that February meeting, if that's what we're on track to do, see what of those top 10, you know, marry across the board, I think that that's, that's an easy, those move up, right? And then if there's, I mean, if we have, you know, five on the top 10 or whatever, four on the top 10, I think that answers our question.
Okay.
I think that might be an easier process. And that's just throwing that out there. I mean, because I think we're all going to do the same thing. We're all going to vet them, talk to them and come up with your top whatever. I mean, maybe, maybe we say three or five, it doesn't matter what the number, but just to make the process easier when we come out of here to get it down from 55.
Councilman?
I agree with what you said there, Councilman. The only thing I would say is we can do our top 10 list like what you said, but I think at that point, I think I'd like to sit down and all of us just interview like we did for the city manager. Sit down there and bring them in and see what they got to say and then determine out of the top 10 which five we want. That's just my way of thinking, adding on to yours.
I, I would, one thing I, well, I don't know, whereas because it was a personnel issue, I mean, that would have to be a public meeting, I think. But number two is, I mean, I mean, we could do that or once we get that list of 10, I mean, I've already talked to some that have already applied and, and other people that may be interested. I like having that idea because I, I, as I said before, I want to, anyone that, that we're strongly considering, I'd just like to talk to. Maybe individually might be the best way. It may be hard to get all of us together with that type of thing, but I think having those conversations are good, but it just may be more feasible that we do it in a one-on-one basis than necessarily a group.
So I, I'm going to go with Councilman Simpson on this one. I think there's a lot to lose in, in having a top 10 list and having interview processes that are in a working session. You have volunteers, once again, that are just volunteering their time. They may understand what they're getting themselves into, they may not totally. And, and I would pull back away from any of the negativity and the feelings of rejection that could come through that. It is one thing for me to nominate someone, it's another thing for me to exclude. And so like I would never want to be in the position where I'm excluding individuals off. So however we get down to the nominations, I'm great with. I could see the benefit of maybe you bringing your top five or whatever or saying, these are the ones that I've sincerely considered at that last meeting in January. That way we do get a formal discussion out here of, yeah, I, I had him too, or oh yes, this lady'd be fantastic and actually I didn't understand that she was that strong in business or in this, this specificity, whatever it is. So, so that conversation would be helpful in putting together the best team we could. But then at the point we, we would make nominations, I would ask if council could still consider, just bring your nomination, you know? Let's keep the, the standard operating procedure the same so that we, we do not have any exclusions or conversations going back and forth of, well, this is the reason I don't want him, right? So, so how does that hit you guys maybe on the right side?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'll just bring my nominations.
So to be clear, there's not going to be a number we're shooting for. If I want to bring three, I'll bring three. If I want to bring seven, I can bring seven.
Right.
So we're each going to do our own interview process, our own communication, and then just come with those and then we'll have, be in the conversation and go from there.
Yeah, so we would, we would have a conversation on the 28th. You know, Councilman Kraft, please start, we'll run the line, everybody could put out theirs. And then knowing that you wouldn't have those nominations formally proposed until the first meeting in February, what's your thoughts?
So we would submit our list of 10 off of those who've applied?
You would submit your, your nominations that you are seriously considering on the 28th of January, but non-formally, you would just submit it here at this meeting. You, it wouldn't be a formal submission through city secretary or anything that you're trying to get turned in. And you could bring one, three, 10, however many people you feel would be the most qualified.
Okay.
For discussion.
Well, I, I just didn't know whether we would have that 10 submitted before that meeting to see, are, are, you know, are there some agreements in, in who's on that list?
I don't think there's any way to do that except through the public forum or the message board, which I don't know if that's what we want to do.
Well, I don't know if Grayson has any ideas about that.
What you, what, one option you could do is that, a bit off of Councilor Tip's route is that if you were to do your interviews for the next month or so, if you were to then identify a list of 10 each of you, you can then submit that to me. We can then go through the list and then compare because you have 55 names. And so it is very feasible that, that I could have, I could have different prior, different, different, different tops from each, each of the five of you. So, but if you picked, say, 10, there's a good chance, you're looking for four individuals. There's a good chance that we might be able to find four out of those, out of all your lists that, that either all five of you like or maybe three, four of the five you like. Then I can then bring that name, that list back to you and say, out of, out of, out of all five 10-person lists, these four, these five, these six, you all five liked. They're all, they're on your list. And then you can then work from that list or you can then decide, you know, we're going to then do something different there. So that way as a body, as consensus wise, you have, you have kind of identified, these are our favorite, these are our top selections there.
So I really appreciate the, the advisement on it and, and it's very, very logical and it's very helpful. However, we have just walked through one of the most polarizing, sensitive issues that has turned controversial. And we are going to have open records requests and documents now that can be pulled out and then commented on by the public. And so I know if I was sitting on that, that list and I was one of those, I, I don't know that I would appreciate the public scrutiny that can take place over that. When we do it here informally like this, I think it allows for it not to be handed in a document and in a procedural form that doesn't invite the public scrutiny of those individuals. And that's what I would try to pull back on. These are individuals that are just willing to help, whether they know what they're getting themselves into or not. I just want to protect that. So I would encourage us, bring your, your names, but, but I don't need a comparative sheet to see where the overlap is from, from you gentlemen. And, and I, I strongly trust each one of you and your judgment in, in being able to interview and bring forward candidates that you know are going to be good teammates. So that's where I'm at. I, I'll take direction, you guys can redirect, we can do it a, a different way.
So we're re, we're reconvening on what date with what list?
So if I have my way, we will have articles voted on on the 14th, agreeable by both parties. Bylaws, procedures and budgets voted on on the 28th, agreeable by both parties and both lawyers. An informal list of your recommendations for discussion only, for nominations for a permanent board. And then the first meeting in February, I don't know the date, but then that would be where you would do board nominations per standard protocol.
Okay. Question, why would we have a discussion with all of them and narrow it down and not vote? I mean, isn't that the whole point? I mean, why would we, why would we narrow it down? We, we-
And then point the next meeting? We are taking it slow and we are, we are trying to facilitate council's request to hear where everybody else is and to do it at a public meeting as needed in lieu of putting it all on paper and having a shared document.
No, 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 I get that, but I mean, once we have the discussion, why not go ahead and vote? I mean, that, and I'm not pushing, I'm just asking, I mean, why not? Because if we, if we narrow it down to all of our five, I mean, why not just appoint?
I, I understand and, and I heard Councilman Simpson say the sooner the better. But Councilman Simpson, you've been the one that wants to move the slowest through this. So would you rather vote on it and make nominations in February?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, if, if, if we're nominating more than four people, the conversation at some point has to go, well, what does this person bring to the other? I would think we could have a, a discussion where we are not criticizing someone, but I mean, if we all four think that this banker we know is the best person to have or this lawyer, whatever, well, we don't need four bankers on there, we don't need four lawyers on there especially. But just figuring out how does this dynamic work? So, I mean, I, I agree with you. It's not that one is better than the other, it's just what is the best composition, you know, for this board at the time? Again, I wouldn't want to slow it down, but if, if, if someone else is nominating someone and I haven't had a chance to have a conversation with them, I would just like to have a conversation with them before we take the final vote.
Well, and I think, I think too, I think a lot of it depends on where we are at the EDC. Are we at a point that we are ready to hand it off?
Right.
You know, I think that's, I think to me that's crucial to make sure that we're at a point to say, okay, now it's time to hand this off.
So I'm, I'm really close to getting this discussion item wrapped up. I mean, we're just right there. So, so one thing that we, we are helping ourselves with is we're giving ourselves a little bit of latitude to allow the, the EDC board and staff to get all of these dates and get it all done and then for us to give feedback. A discussion about your vetted and sincerely preferred candidates is good in the end of January and then we could place nominations in February. And honestly, that's moving fairly quick for the old wheels of government. So if we-
Mayor, real quick, two Panhandle Days is that first week and first meeting in February. So I think you and I are both set to be, I know, I cannot be here.
What's the, what's the date on the first meeting? February what?
11th.
11th and when is Panhandle Day?
I think 11th and 12th, I believe.
Oh.
So, I mean, it's-
Okay.
I can be there, but it'd be critical you be here.
You got, council may consider moving the, the meeting up. If it's the 11th, what is it, the 4th, February 4th? So could we have a meeting on the 28th and then the 4th? And, and then that would allow Panhandle Days and council to, to go to Austin. So really good discussion. I think we're, we're getting there. Mr. Fairley, I would ask from your point of, your perspective, your point of view, do you need anything further or do you feel like you, you understand where we're at?
Yeah, no, I think I got it. I got my orders.
Okay.
I think we can be ready by the 14th.
Of January?
Yes.
Okay. I'll tell you what, while we look at dates and we figure all that out, let's take a 15-minute recess, let's come back in here and take up those dates and the rest of the discussion.
How'd you freeze?
He said on what day?
[laughing]
And then to Les' point of finding the right outside counsel that we chose one, but I don't know that anyone out counsel is going to be an expert in all fields. So it might be a better way to utilize that process, which I've talked to Grayson about this as well as, you know, if we funnel things through him, always through him, that if our counsel, staff counsel can't do it, that we have a list or somebody, a group that we've approved that we can go to that says, hey, they are good at this. So those are my concerns.
Okay.
What does the charter say? What's this charter?
I want to hear it.
Grayson?
Well, I don't know. It's, I don't think it's in the charter. I think it's ordinance.
Ordinance, thank you.
Let's hear it. Okay.
So I think the code that Councilman Tipp is referring to is two dash three dash four, I believe. It's engaging out other attorneys. And so is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
So as it reads, nothing in this chapter shall be construed to a bridge or in any way restrict the power of the city manager with the advising consent of the city council to employ such other attorneys as he may see fit to advise the city council and the city manager or represent the city in any action pending your perspective. I think that's the one you're referring to as well.
Yep. So the way I looked at it is what we're, what we're doing or what we created, and I think unintentionally, is we're bypassing city manager. And I think the way that ordinance reads is it's really up to him when we need outside counsel or we need counsel, we run it through him. We run every single thing through him so that he's on, one, for transparency, he's on board, but also to maybe direct to the correct counsel.
Wouldn't that put him above us?
Does that put city manager above us?
Wouldn't that put your authority above us if we couldn't dictate?
No, because it has, it says it, we have to work together on it. So we give the advice and consent, but the power is the ordinance says it.
Yeah, but from a legislative manner, I mean, wouldn't we have the power as the government body?
We should have the power. We are the top of the chart, the people, then us.
Because if I remember, I mean, like, so you take, for instance, I remember we had this discussion way back when during the charter stuff is we got away from putting attorney appointed by counsel on the ballot because essentially George Hyde fixed that issue that we were looking at at the time, right? So I think, I think there's a difference between counsel, as far as the counsel that the city council would need versus hiring of an assistant city attorney. I think it's speaking to that versus legal counsel for us.
I know our city attorney told me he does not work for me. He works for the city.
George Hyde doesn't work for you either.
No, I'm talking about this one right here. This guy right down here at the end.
Yeah, but George Hyde doesn't work for us either.
Yeah, he does. Well, I'm hiring him.
He doesn't work for counsel specifically.
He represents counsel.
If I could clarify real quick, two dash three dash two says the city attorney shall be the legal advisor and attorney for the city council and all officers and departments of the city. And so, so the city attorney would, would advise counsel, staff, and so, and then two dash three dash one, the city attorney should be appointed by the city manager with advising consent of the city council. So that's a structure that city code has laid out.
But Brian has told me he does not represent the council. Straight, straight out, is that right, Brian?
No.
Well, that's what you told me one day.
No, I don't represent individual council members. I represent the, the council or the city as a whole. That's my responsibility. And that's, that's my responsibility from the, from the professional model rules in Texas. That is my responsibility, so.
But then if I got a problem, let's say I disagree with you, where do I go?
If, that's, again, that's, you would come to me. And so as a city-
You're not a lawyer.
I know, but it's my duty to find, to find a legal counsel.
We found one, is where I'm saying.
Understand the way that the ordinance reads is that's his job. Where this is out of order.
Well, let's, let's dig into that because I think there, there's a point there. So there's something that I want to clarify just as a point. So it's a little frightening. Quite frankly, it's almost scary, the power that rests here on this dais with three individuals. And I'll use a department that we don't have. So I'll just state for the public record, we do not have an ICE department. So we do not make ICE as a practice here within the city. So as an example only, if this council came and said, we want to remove the ICE department, the Department of ICE is no longer, and we vote that in, Mr. Path, that would be your orders? You'd carry that out? You'd remove an entire department?
Absolutely.
Okay, so now, we don't hire and fire employees, correct?
Correct.
You do that.
Correct.
But if we wanted to remove an entire department, we can have you and instruct you to remove an entire department, and that would remove employees, correct?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Are there any restrictions on counsel per this ordinance that restricts council's abilities from directing itself?
From directing itself?
Yes.
Can you clarify, please?
Sure. So, so do we tell you we have an issue and wait on you to direct us? Or do we direct you?
You, you direct me.
Okay, so I think the way that we're saying this right here is that we would come to you and say, hey, we need legal advisement. City attorney says, you know, that's not really my specialty. Let us go get you legal advisement. You could, and I think it's very healthy, you could recommend and nominate, say, hey, this is the firm that I would lead you to. We can engage with them in a resolution or a letter of engagement. That's normal. However, are we restricted to that process per the charter?
Per the charter, per the code?
Both.
Well, again, the way the process would be is that you would, you would, as you're a senior advisor, myself and the judge are two employees that work for the council, you would then direct me to find legal counsel for you. So I would work with the city county, city attorney first, and then we would provide counsel. If, if, if the city attorney's office and I believe that that's not, that he is not in that wheelhouse, we then bring to either an HR specialist, a bond counsel specialist. We then find for you an appropriate counsel for that role.
So I agree with all of that. I think that what I'm asking specifically is, is there a restriction upon council's authority per the charter and per the code? Because if we did have a conflict, we would want to work that out. So here's where I would go with this. An empowerment of the city manager per your roles and responsibilities is not a restriction on this council. So we've empowered you to go out and, and bring different recommendations. But if you brought a recommendation, or if a council member, let's say council member Kraft brings his own. So we do this with boards and commissions. We, we don't only rely on staff to tell us, these are the options of who you may pick from. Staff is now telling you, you know, it's our job to bring you recommendations, and then it's your job to pick A, B, or C. Also with outside engagement, I think we, we should still have the power. I would like Councilman Kraft to be able to bring a recommendation to this body that then would flow down to you, that then you could go and vet that. Now, you could come back and advise against it, but the three votes would then employ that attorney per the charter.
Sure, yes. The council ultimately is in charge.
Mr. McWilliams?
I agree.
You confer? Okay. So does that, does that settle that issue? Or do we need to continue discussing that particular? Because I think that's an important foundational basis of if we want to restrict each other with maybe putting some handcuffs on ourselves, we have the ability to do that. We could do that through policy. But if, if we are looking for staff to restrict us, I don't think it ever works that way. Agreed?
Yeah, I agree.
Is that where you're going as well, Councilman Kraft? Okay. Councilman Simpson would ask for you to-
Well, what I, what I would just say is, and I go, I go back to, we spend $2 million a year in legal services. Whatever legal issue that we have, have, and every time we go to outside counsel, it's adding to the taxpayer cost above and beyond the 2 million. What I think, what I'm wanting to look at is before we go to outside counsel, can we, can we go to our city manager and say, we have a legal problem that we're looking to solve? We like to do it within the confines of the money that we already spend, so we don't have to spend additional money. And let him search his employees, his legal staff, being able to do whatever that is, and then come back to us with a recommendation or recommendations, you know? But I think it's, I don't think it has to be an adversarial relationship. I think what the charter says is we work together to be able to do that. Not that, you know, I mean, you could get into, I'm sure, a long dissertation about the council manager form of government. And council and the council manager form of government does have limited powers as opposed to a mayor, a mayor council, you know, form of government. So I'm just saying, working together to be able to use the staff. But to me, the most important part of it is, let's make sure if we can get it solved financially without having to go to anything outside and we've got the resources, or maybe if we're using outside resources enough to say, man, maybe we should hire a couple of attorneys ourselves instead of getting one-time advice to be able to do that. And so that, what I'm saying is, you know, looking at adopting the practice of charging our employee to solve this problem for us, he coming back with the suggestions on how to do it, and we have an agreement on how we're going to do that going forward.
I agree 100% with you, Councilman Simpson. The stewardship aspect of this should be in the way of we are using the, the, the resources that we've already paid for. You've already paid for it, go to that resource first. The restriction of saying you don't have the ability to use resources that are currently in your budget. So the $250,000 that was approved by this council in the budget to go for outside counsel is not just a, you know, a contract with, you know, Hyde Kelly. It is an allotment so that we are being good stewards. Now, that $250,000 doesn't restrict us in our authority. It does show our willingness to be good stewards, and it's within the 1.8, 1.9 million dollar overall budget. It's not on top of, if I remember correctly, and Mrs. Stor is not here, but I'm sure she knows the number. So I agree with you, stewardship matters. So, you know, our next item is protocol, and really, I think this is the discussion that I'm, I'm wanting to have. So I'm not moving us forward, I'm going to stay on yours, but what I hear you saying is more protocol. Like, councilmen should be going to inside prepaid attorney first, then with Mr. Path advising us as our, our lead advisor, us being able to say, you know, that's not really what I needed. It doesn't help me get to where I'm going. I'm going to engage with outside counsel. Now, whether I wanted to call Mick McCamey or whether I wanted to call George Hyde, that should remain in, in my hands. Now, if we want to put additional protocols up on this dais where we require each other to get a, a second, right, before you do that, I think those are the things that I would be very open to restricting.
Yeah. I, I just think, I mean, what's happened here, not, you know, again, we're in uncharted territory. This has not happened before of a council hiring its own attorney. I mean, the tricky part gets in, we can only function and operate as a group of five. He's representing the council. But what happens is, there are things that are being referred to him that I have, I don't even know what it is. It's kind of hard for us to work together if we're dealing with issues that all of us don't know about, or if there's something to know about. If, if I've got to get advice or find out what's going on, you know, I mean, an advantage of having it through Grayson is the ability, if he's, you know, not to say, you know, no, he's not impeding our power, but he's a focal point to help keep all of us informed about what's going on. At this point, with, with each of us individually having to contact him, we get charged every time we go for legal advice, and I don't know the legal advice he's giving the others. So to me, that's why a central focal point of just keeping all of us informed about what the issues are, what the advice is, as well as being able to watch the expenses to help us operate more efficiently and effectively.
I agree with you in the stewardship. Now, you know, you're paying for it because you may be calling your attorney, Mr. Hyde, and saying, hey, you know, who, what are you talking to the other counsel about? I want an update on, on all matters legal. He can give that to you. Now, the restriction would not be that you can't talk to your city attorney. So I don't require you to notify all of council when you're engaging with city attorney about a topic that you're going to present at council. Maybe-
But our outside attorney is going to charge us for it.
Agreed. Stewardship is the focal point there, but I'm also separating stewardship from restriction. So I don't want to apply a restriction on outside counsel that I'm not applying on inside counsel. So if we as a body are trying to say that we, I'm not comfortable unless I know everybody that's talking to Brian, and I want Brian to give me a weekly update, then that, that's not how this form of government is set up. So I wouldn't apply that restriction to, to a Hyde Kelly firm. Now, the stewardship issue is going to be the monies that are being spent. So I would like to put some protocols in and when we are dealing with outside counsel, making sure we're not doing double the work or spending three times the money. So do you have any thoughts or ideas?
Well, what I would like to come to is, is a point where our first avenue is going through the city manager and listening to our advisor to see what he has to say about this. No matter what the legal issue is. I mean, that's why we hire him, to have this knowledge base to, again, you know, we could get into the debate about the power, but, and to be able to monitor it. I like having a central point of information. He's got to keep us all informed. He does it without charging us every single time and being able to figure out the best resource for being able to solve whatever legal issue he does. Again, the problem that, that we've gotten into is, is just, it's tricky because we are not all five agreeing to what we're sending to him. We're doing it individually, and, but I don't see how we can make these decisions as if he's representing all of council, that individually we can ask him to do, to work on whatever we work on, because there's no checking balance on how much are we getting charged, what we're sending down there, how that's working.
So if we go back to the example of the ICE department, so let's say I am wanting to remove the ICE department, and you love the ICE department.
I do.
It is the department that you advocate for in every budget session. So I'm going to engage in this protocol with my city manager and/or my city attorney. Now, I don't have to engage my city manager because maybe he used to run the ICE department, and I know he's adversarial. So I could then go to my city attorney, and I require, hey, how would I remove the ICE department, right? So, so now, he is not going to come back and tell all of council, mayor's trying to remove the ICE department, just giving you guys a heads up. That's not his job, right? So the advisement that I get from him is not good. It's incomplete, let's say. And so he more or less said, hey, you can't do that. Sorry. And I'm like, well, I'm pretty sure I think I can, but well, I don't know how to do it. Well, good luck. So at that point, then, what would be the next step in the protocol in that example? Would I then grab Mr. Tipp, who I think is friendly to that, and then we would engage with outside counsel? Because we're not restricted from engaging with outside counsel, we're just trying to be good stewards. So I'm, I'm willing to follow the protocol. I like that first step. Step one, engage with city manager and/or city attorney. Step two, engage with fellow city council member?
Yeah, why, why not? I mean, if this is a legal issue that we're looking at, legal counsel for an issue, can that be, can that be an executive session discussion?
Uh, no, because you need the ability to bring something prepared to, to that body and not unprepared. So, so I don't want to, I don't want to limit council's ability to go and do their homework and understand what they're trying to do before they have to go. And it may not be an appropriate exec, may not be something that you could get sued for, and so now we're having private conversations that need to be had in public. So in, in the willingness of, of working as five individual elected representatives, I want you to, to remain autonomous. I don't ever want a mayor that can restrict you from getting the education you need to carry out with maybe the ICE department.
Yeah. Well, to me, I mean, the way we've done things, I think it's time to bring it forward to this council as five people and, and debate the ICE department.
And if I may, real quick, again, there's a difference between, between education and direction. So again, when you look at the charter sections 20 and 21, as well as chapter two dash three of the city code, you look at being the city manager, the reason you have a manager for the management of government is that I'm here to coordinate and to help. Because obviously, as individual council members, you, you don't have individual authority to direct and, and, and do those things, but you can also query and those things. But as a body, you can direct. That's when you do in public meetings and so forth. And so my role is that given individually, under our charter, again, that's where the charter and the code is written, under the charter, given the council cannot perform individual actions, you coordinate with me, I, I bring you the resources, we work together with legal counsel, and then we, we help educate, and then as a body, we work together to develop policy and budgets and so forth. But that's, that's the key role in all this is, is under the charter 20 and 21, is keeping the manager informed for coordination purposes. That way, individual council members are being, are, are coordinated through the city manager, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. So Councilman Tipp, you seem like you're leaning up. So if you had, you want to get rid of the ICE department, you don't want to go to city manager because he, that's where he came from. So you bypass him, and you go to city attorney for legal advice, whatever, on how to do this. Technically, that's not the way we're supposed to do it. Right? We are not supposed to go directly to staff, which I think is, even, even for queries-
No, no, you are supposed to go to your city attorney.
We can go to city attorney.
Oh, yeah. Without going through-
So we can bypass you to go to city attorney.
Sure.
But not, not other staff.
Right. You shouldn't go to the director of parks and rec and tell him to trim that tree, but then you can definitely engage with your city attorney on anything.
Okay. So my point was, what he was saying is, the coordination part is, he works for us. If he's not doing his job, and he's not, or even to the way I feel like he should, then I can bring it up before here, and I can talk to you and say, man, Grayson's not doing a great job. We need to talk about, you know, something, a change, his evaluation, something, you know? So to me, the coordination part's a big deal, because that's what he hired, that's what we hired him for. We went through the whole interview process, we chose him for whatever reasons, that if we don't feel like he's doing his job, if we don't use him to coordinate through a lot of these things-
Right, and I, I agree with you.
... opportunity. I agree with you. If, so let's go to step two. Go ahead.
I disagree because if it's a policy measure, then I'll go with city manager with attorney. He's going like, I mean, there may be things that if I want to work on a policy issue, I don't include all four of y'all on. I mean, you know?
You don't have to.
That's what I'm saying. So I may go down the whole route before I ever want to bring it up, vet the whole thing out.
But that's where you can-
But if I want legal advice, I'll go straight to the attorney. I'll bypass the city manager.
So I think I see a path forward if I could take one more step. So if you go to the city manager and/or attorney first, not both, but like you could go to either one, then you're back at the city manager's office once you get that advice. And so the, the, the assumption or the example was that I didn't like the legal counsel I was given. So this protocol would then require me to go to the city manager at that point. Hey, I went to the city attorney, and I didn't like the advice that I got about how to remove the ICE department. And so I want you to go and obtain outside counsel for me, because that's my protocol. And then he's going to go out and he's going to look for outside counsel that knows how to remove the ICE department. He's going to bring that back. At, at no point in time am I restricted. So keep in mind, I know he's friendly with the ICE department, I didn't get what I needed. So the, the measure dies, or I need to be able to engage with outside city attorney of my own selection. Now, that's where it gets tricky. Because see, I can't go and call any attorney without bringing it to you guys. So we're almost kind of forgetting the way that we did this. We did call a recommendation, we had three, we called all of them, we ended up bringing the one back that was more suited, we all voted for it before I was ever able to engage with that attorney firm. Now that that attorney firm has a letter of engagement, and he had an executed resolution, now you're able to engage with him. We're almost acting as though we didn't do that, and it's not still standing. You would literally have to amend the resolution right now to say that we need to go back to square one, where you now need to go and find an attorney, bring it to council and say, guys, I'm working on a measure, and I'd like to have outside counsel, I'm not getting what I need from city attorney or city manager. Then I believe that to be a very appropriate step here. But why would we need to do that if we've already hired him? Yeah, so we, I guess we've engaged with Hyde to not exceed whatever the number is.
Correct.
Right, not to exceed that number. So once that number's reached, we can have that discussion, is what you're saying. So basically, we've already hired him. Which we did, we did, we did have that. I know, yeah. We did, but we've got a new limit, right? Right. So it, it really should be more task-driven. So every time you have a task, it's like, hey, ICE department is my task, I want to hire outside counsel, I went and researched, it turns out, these are, this is the best firm in the state that deals with ICE departments. So city manager, go and procure it. Well, he will take that directive, even though he doesn't want to, let's say, and he would put it on the agenda, and we would vote for it. At that time, then I'm going to be as prepared as I can be to let everybody know, I need an attorney that can help me, you know, work through this, this issue. Now, I'm still limited, but I'm only limited by you four. Now, if you vote it down, if it's a one to four, two to three vote, then I don't get that counsel, I don't have that attorney. I mean, the, the measure dies. But if we voted in, and I now have that access, that resource, then I don't want myself restricting you from engaging with that attorney, except for stewardship. So I do think that it would be appropriate to try to go through city manager and city attorney first, but then allow you, you got elected. You know, you had a lot of people, 17,000 people, I think Don got the most votes in all of history, or at least he says he did. That's a lot of trust that the public put in you to be a good steward. You found $29 million in your budget, and you reallocated, you, you're working with a $6 million budget surplus right now, and you're talking about $7,000 over a $100,000 contract that we had. We've been good stewards. All I'm saying is, is you earned the right to be here. That comes with a few luxuries for your ability to go and get properly educated, not to mention the damage that you could do by haphazardly walking out into a public meeting to our organization and go, I think today's the day I want to talk about the ICE department. I'd like to get rid of it. Well, you're, you're harming us, and you didn't even go and, and educate yourself or, or, you know, seek wise counsel. So I trust you guys in restricting us, but not beyond the measure of the charter and beyond the measure of the resolution. So I feel like right now, at this point, we would have a discussion on, do we not like having an attorney? Do we want to put it back up for vote? Do we want to vote to amend that resolution so that we don't have outside counsel? And then we would need to go back and get that back. I mean, you can do that at any time. Anybody could bring that back through the city manager. Or would we be better to keep this resolution in place and just work on being better stewards as we work with each other and saying, you know, on your honor, I'd like to see you go through city manager or city attorney on every request first. Once you strike out there, then you already have retained counsel. So you're not going to direct Mr. Path to go get you a new attorney. Why would you? We're all going to ask you, what's wrong with the one we're paying for that's already there? What's wrong with McCamey, who's already on retainer? Why can't you use one of those two? Why are we adding a third? So my, my question, I'll leave it there. That's, that's where I'm at. I just, I want to know how aggressive we'd like to be on that existing resolution. Well, I mean, I, I would agree, having an attorney on call is great, but I also think that it can be abused. And like you said, the power, I'm not trying to usurp the power up here, but I'm trying to be a good steward to say, I don't get to just do what I want to do. Now, I agree, we've all approved the resolution, I understand that, and that's great. So maybe to your point of like, we just got to develop maybe better protocols, because I think it's a, an issue of, there's lots of time that I can just pick up and ask him questions. And I just don't think that that's being a great steward. I mean, we see the bills that come through, it's, it is a lot of money. Now, you say we found $6 million, we're operating on a $6 million working budget, and that's great. And the luxury to have an attorney on call is great. So I, I guess, putting the, the protocols, guardrails in place to say, hey, maybe we need to be better stewards of this, and be careful how we expend the money, and especially, like you said, if we go this route first, you know, and say, can this be done? Because I think by bypassing that, we're kind of bypassing the ability to maybe get good counsel or get bad counsel, and then to allow city manager to do his job.
And city attorney to do his job.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I mean. Yeah, 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 that's what I mean.
I know, every time I use an attorney, I get two to three opinions. Because you can talk to attorney, every one of them's going to read the law a little different. talk to attorney, every one of them's going to read the law a little different. That's why I like to talk to the attorney myself, because I know what question was asked to attorney number one. I know what was asked to attorney number two. Then you can drill down to see where the difference is. Now, I know myself, I haven't called Mr. Hyde but two times. And that was all, okay? But those times I called, I felt it was important for me to get good legal advice. Because I'm looking at it from my point as a council member that I've got to know when I'm voting, is this legal? Is it not legal? Can we do it a different way? Now, that's where Brian, I guess me and him got a disconnect because he told me he doesn't represent the council. Well, at that point, if you don't represent me, I've been going out and making two phone calls myself. Before we had George Hyde, I was picking up a bill. I mean, to be truthful. Because well, I've got to have representation. And I don't want to, you know, like Brian represents the city as he says. He doesn't represent us per se. That's, I'll leave it there.
So I guess my question is, how, so if we, if we say, okay, whatever, it takes two council members because we can't talk with three. But if it takes two council members, that's not all of council, that's just two people. How do I, as a council member, then find out about what's going on?
As soon as we bring it to the dais. Same way you should anyway. So I want to remove the ICE department and I grab council member Kraft and we go and we talk about it and we think it's a good idea. You didn't know about it. Well, then we brought it to the dais.
Well, shouldn't, should I know about it beforehand?
No.
So you just want to do it and then figure out and then?
That's the purpose of a public meeting. And, and you need that right. So I, as the mayor, do not require you to talk to me about every initiative that you may want to, you may want to run.
But this council, the council does not, our lawyer does not represent us individually. He doesn't represent two of us. He represents all of us.
That's correct.
All five of us.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, if, if he's looking at something, I want to know about it. He's, he's representing all of us.
Right. So you do have the ability as his customer and, and him as your counsel to contact him and say, hey, I would like an update on the things that you're working on. And he would gladly give that. Now, he's going to charge you for that.
Yeah, he's going to charge us. So that gets to.
But that's the stewardship. But you're going to know. Now, he's not going to tell you, it's my idea. And he may not give you details as to like where he's at in the process. But you know, yeah, Ten Commandments was a topic and you have at least two council members that are looking at the legal way to, to put a Ten Commandments monument up.
Well, I, I like the idea of going through the city manager to get that information back so that all of us can be access and privy as to what's going on without having to pay additional money for it.
And I think I can go with that. So protocol. Stewardship can be on our honor. You're, you would agree if we write this up as a council member to always attempt to get your resources and your needs met through city manager and/or city attorney. Now, when you feel like it's not getting met or you're unsatisfied or you still don't know, then you do currently have outside counsel available. What we could ask is for you to get a second council member to go with you. So that would prevent any of us from just running, picking up the phone, maybe wasting money. Now you have two, which if you're in agreement with that, that's where you're going to go anyway if you're trying to work something to the dais. You're going to end up talking to one person. And then from there, you'd be bringing it back to council and we would all know.
And does a current resolution allow us to go to any attorney or only to Hyde Kelly's firm?
Current resolution allows Hyde Kelly to be engaged because that's what we passed. And then we funded it with $250,000 in the given budget when we made that amendment before we passed the final budget. Now, you also have Mick McCamey, who is currently engaged, correct? We're still engaged with Mick McCamey. And, and he's on, he's not on retainer. I, I apologize. We don't have him on retainer. We have the ability to pay him and he could invoice. So you have three attorneys right now, but you also have Underwood. Like as a, as an example, they represent the AEDC. So, you know, like if you were wanting to engage with John Atkins, I'm not, I'm not limiting your ability to do that. I'm also not telling you that you got to come and tell all of us everything that you're concerned with before you can go out and get educated.
And then where is the final accountability on how much we're spending to make sure that we don't overspend?
That's your budget.
But who's keeping track of that?
You are. You're approving the bills as they come in. They have to be approved by all council members.
So if, if I go to someone else, then it comes back to all council members?
Well, we all would need to approve it. So I like the protocol that we have is I can't approve Hyde Kelly's bill. So Hyde Kelly sends the bill to myself and city manager. City manager sends it to all of y'all and says, please review this. Let us know if you have concerns. You had concerns on the last bill. He's getting those clarified and then if you approve it, then he gets paid.
What if we don't approve it?
I'm not sure. I didn't get that far. He's an attorney, so I don't know.
So we're kind of approving it after the fact?
Well, no. I'm just saying, you, yeah, you signed a contract with the guy. He's performed. And then I think the issue of, of approval is its awareness more than anything. We want all five council members and the city staff to know that we've, we've spent this money. And his invoice has come pretty descriptive in topic of 1.5 hours conversation with the mayor, legal advisement on AEDC.
Well, actually, the last one didn't have that kind of detail, which is what I was asking for.
So you'll get it.
To get some, some more detail on that.
Right. So you'll get that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I know it can be concerning. Now, here's one thing that I would say.
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
All this sounds to me like it should be, listen, I just, my concern is, are we setting a precedent here? I trust all of us. But, but are we doing something and setting a precedent that's never happened before that another council could come in here, do something differently? Or you have unintended consequences with it?
No, we're not. And here's why. The, the truth of this, the bottom line is, this has been going on forever. So previous mayor and council used all sorts of attorney firms. What was Fulbright? What's the name of that attorney firm? Helped with the Civic Center? What's a, what's the name of the attorney? Norton?
Yes.
I mean, they engaged. I don't remember that getting voted on in a resolution. Maybe it did. I don't know. I think it just came out illegal. I asked forever, as a council member for two years, where do we pay for all of these lawsuits and all these attorneys from? I never approve a bill. I never see anything. So previous mayor and council just directed things through staff and staff didn't push back. This council has been painstakingly public in bringing everything out because we want accountability to our taxpayer. And so that's why you're having this conversation. But no, you're not setting a precedent. Every other council has just done it different in the given budget. So given budget, just line item transferred a few things, I believe.
Well, to me, as we're setting this up now with a protocol, to me, this sounds like it would, I mean, if this is a protocol that we're having to enact every month or every other month, I think we've got bigger problems than, than legal counsel.
I agree with you. I think that the, the goal here would be to only get special counsel when you need it and then to always facilitate the best team you can. So in letting the city manager and the city attorney do their job, if they're doing their job, you have no reason to go out for city coun, or for special counsel.
But just to be, be clear, the, the money, if, if, if a rare exception happens right now, we are not obligated to go with Hyde Kelly, any of us, as long as we were to get someone else.
No, the money's in the budget. And the money's in the budget. And I think that's the best thing I've heard you like repeat in, in saying like, this is what I'm trying to say. I'm probably just not saying it rightly. I don't ever want a mayor that can restrict the city council men or women from being able to go out and, and engage with a good attorney. Now, in order to get that resolution passed, you should be able to go out and talk to anybody that you want in the specialty of that field and bring it back to council for a vote. But once you get that vote, you don't want a mayor, you don't want a city manager restricting your ability to talk to that attorney.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think that's fine. And again, as a fellow council member, I mean, you know, as long as we, it's, I mean, if there's all these discussions and all this legal money spending, being spent on a topic, I just think it, the sooner all of council knows about it, the better. I think we all need to know about whatever that is that's being spent and being done so we can all govern as one.
Other concerns on this or maybe the example of the protocol that we've put out?
So you're going to reread this? We're going to make this, the protocol official?
You can give direction to staff and let them tweak this and work this out to where we could have something that we were willing to put in place that would give some directives to ourselves. Or we could choose not to put further restrictions on ourselves. But yeah, you're, you're choosing to restrict yourself by agreeing to work through a protocol.
Which you feel like is a good idea.
I can go with it. Yeah. I don't, I don't mind working through the.
Just the stewardship mainly.
I agree. Yeah. I don't, I don't mind having some boundaries at all. It doesn't restrict the power of council. It just puts you through some given steps that you kind of on your honor have to abide by.
Well, as long as we're getting copies of these bills to approve, we're being updated, are we not? If we see something on the bill, I don't know. I can go ask Grayson or whoever we talk to. I mean, if it says, if Hyde's bill says I talked to Josh Craft for 30 minutes on da, 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 I can go to Josh. I mean, it's, it's notated there. That way, I'm not waiting for this information. But at the end of the day, I may want to talk to a lawyer without anybody knowing I'm talking to him. Okay? I may be wanting to talk about Grayson to the lawyer instead. I hate to go to Grayson and say, Grayson, I want to talk to the lawyer about you. Can't do that, you know? But I, I think we've got to have some, we've got common sense. We've used this for two issues. The abortion sanctuary city and AEDC. These are basically the only times we've used Hyde. Is that right?
That's not correct.
How did you look at the bill? That's not even close to right.
There's been other things that have been used.
Okay, what are they?
Public Information Act requests.
Yeah, so I remember that, but.
There's some other thing, other topics that I think have not come up or.
Open Meeting Act were some things that we needed advisement on. And, and so ultimately, he was hired to come, originally, he was hired to come and give some trainings as a consultant. We were, we were trying to get him here to do some Toma and Pia education on how we respond. Does council want to restrict itself by putting some protocols together? Or at least, would you like to direct staff to type them up and then you could, you could read them?
Yes, I would.
I got a yes. I got a no.
You say restrict ourselves. You're saying to be better stewards of it. I mean, I think it's, it's semantics, but what you're saying is restrict ourselves, but I don't.
It's, it's holding ourselves accountable through a, to a, a step or a procedure that you don't necess, well, you don't legally have to hold yourself accountable to. You're already being held accountable to the budget and it's in the budget. So.
I think it's, I think it's good for transparency just for, like you said, I mean, you're in a position of authority. You're elected, but there's some power and authority that we have that's, again, we can talk about illegal or lawful.
I got a yes.
You got a yes.
I got a no. I got a yes. I got a yes and I got a no. Okay. I'm going to say yes. I don't, I don't have a problem with protocol. And then we can vote on it. I'm, I'm at least willing to, to hear it and let staff type it up. So Grayson, is this something you could help us with?
I believe so. I'll need to get some clarification probably after the meeting, so.
Yeah. And, and to reiterate it or restate it more clearly so the public can hear it. We're saying that we would hold ourselves accountable to bringing any issue first to the city manager and the city attorney and/or city attorney to see what resources can be given and advisement. Then if we were going to need outside counsel, we would come to you and we would ask you first. Can you go and locate outside counsel that is an expert in ICE? And then you could go and do that. We still hold the, the authority to say, that's not who I want. I'd like this company. This is, this is the firm I like. Then at that point, we would be able to present or select another councilman. So you're in the, the protocol, you either select a councilman and you get somebody else on board, or you present to council. Now, with the given resolution, you then can engage with the council. So, and I say council, not our council, but legal council. So where you're at in this city manager and/or city attorney, if you don't need outside city council because we've already retained it, you can go straight to city council. Or I mean, I'm sorry, you can go straight to legal council.
I can take a stab at it.
Okay.
I just think, I mean, I think the key point, and I think, Don, you mentioned this, is being good stewards and giving, giving our staff the opportunity to address whatever it may be and figure out, do we have staff on board? Do we need outside counsel? I think, you know, our city manager would know where to get that. And I like having, and the rare exception that we, that he can't solve the problem for us, then there's still that. But I, but again, I would hope for financial responsibilities and otherwise, that we can work with the city manager to get those legal issues signed so that we don't have to increase the cost to the taxpayers by going to outside counsel.
Yeah. And we in no way are saying how we're going to vote on this protocol because we haven't seen it. We are just giving direction and getting a consensus on, is this something we want to move forward with? So we would direct city manager to type up a protocol that's, that's similar to what you think would work best and, and also in line with the way our discussion's gone. Okay. Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we, we did do item 7G and we also covered 7H. On item 7I, do I have any future requested agenda items? Okay. We're going to move on to consent items. Item KK is not ready, Ms. City Secretary. Am I saying that one correct? So I'm going to ask that we pull item KK because it's not ready. Do I have any other items on the consent agenda that council would like to pull for further discussion? No? Okay. Then I would, you know, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as stated, except for KK.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on consent? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to non-consent.
That's the fastest we moved all the.
It's only 6:30. Item 9A, public hearing, Mr. Brady Kendrick. He's only been waiting patiently.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 8171. This is a rezoning of Lot 1, Block 85, Belmar, Unit Number 33. This is in Randall County, Texas, in the vicinity of Danvers Drive and Oxbow Trail, and the applicant is Barry Bedwell. And they are proposing to rezone from Plan Development District 104 to Plan Development District 104A to construct a building for additional storage units on the site. The applicant is proposing to construct an additional building on this site and given that this was originally passed with a site-specific site plan, that is the reason that they, they have to amend the plan development. The current site is developed with an office building and additionally with a storage building with 17 storage units that are available for lease. And the proposed site is on your screen now. They are proposing the new building at the northern portion of the site to have additional storage buildings for lease. The Planning and Zoning Commission did find that this was in conformance with the City Plan 2045 and the place type identified for the site. The new building would be 4,000, 4,320 square feet and would contain nine additional storage units and would be 14 feet tall and would meet all other development standards that are typical of commercial development regarding setbacks, parking, landscaping, et cetera. We did send public notices as required by state law and did not receive any comments as of this meeting today. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this item with a 7-0 vote.
Any questions for Mr. Kendrick on item 9A?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone here today that would like to speak for or against item 9A? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, would entertain a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance number 8171.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 9B, Rich? No, is that right? Yep. Rich is coming up here. Talk to us about digital human agreement.
Do you like the new website?
Good evening. Rich Gaiman, Assistant City Management CIO. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thrilled to announce we're launching Conversational City 1.0. And I'd like to kind of walk through some of the, the accomplishments that your, your team has pulled off over the last year. You know, you guys all know my background. I come from high tech, high growth, innovative companies. The innovation process is easy. It's not that complex. But building an innovative culture is hard. It's hard in private sector. It's so much harder in government. And one of the first lessons that I had to learn is, you know, in private sector, you innovate in the dark. You're trying to get competitive advantage over other companies and keep it. That doesn't work in public sector. You can't clearly define the problem if you don't engage with your residents. You know, we wanted to build on, on an innovation on, in a human-first approach to technology. And we've been in agreement, council and staff from the start, that we want a human-first approach and that, and that's why we passed and started with the Digital Dignity Rights and Privacy Resolution. I, I will note, you'll see that already on the, the webpage. We're already working to add to that through January and February. You'll start to see policies added to that. We've been working with internal audit so that it has an audit process just like cybersecurity and we're transparent with our, with our public as we move forward. But we're also developing that muscle. So a core, two core tenets when it comes to digital dignity, rights and privacy are transparency and engagement. And I can say that from a technology standpoint, if you, you know, we've always been good at the, or we've been good at it a long time at the internal engagement and transparency. But we use this project to really build muscles on the external engagement. None of this work was done in isolation. We actually did this in combination with our residents. We've launched a beta program for Emma for this project. We had over 100 residents volunteer to be beta testers throughout, throughout the, the process. We actually trained our internal staff. So we worked with Kathy out of Dell, who is a longtime user experience expert. She helped us work through the process of how do you do user experience testing with your residents? The team from Utility Building, Jennifer's team did a phenomenal job working with library to run us through the test process. And it impacted our roadmap before we ever launched. You know, I'm a technologist and I'm as guilty as all of them of, I see a cool feature and I'm like, this is going to be so awesome. And we had that on this. You know, if you remember the earlier demos, we, we had Emma, I, I asked how to pay a water bill. She answered the question and then just automatically navigated our, you to that part of the site. They hated that. They were like, yeah, that's really cool. But what if I? They hated that. They're like, yeah, that's really cool, but what if I have a follow-up question? Maybe I don't want to go right now. Can't she just ask me if I'm ready and give me the link? So we delayed that. We didn't launch that in our soft launch. That's coming next, right? That'll be the next feature we add. And then instead of launching something our residents didn't like, we actually took their feedback and we're going to launch it the way that they want it. And that's the way it should work. And now that we've built that process, our next step is really to start formalizing that program. So as new features for Emma come out and test, there's different environments. You have a test environment that you build new things in. You have a staging environment where when changes are made, you make those in staging to make sure you don't impact the performance of the site. And then you move that to production. Well, when we launch things and test now, we have a beta group that we can have them test it for us. Right now, we've got about 100. My goal by the end of the year is to have 1,000. So that as we do these projects, we're really sort of testing it with our own public, gathering the feedback and making sure that we do technology in a way that serves the need and that they're comfortable with. And it's going to go beyond Emma. You know, we're looking at utility billing software. We'll use the exact same process. That will be our process going forward is doing user testing with, as we roll out services to our residents. Now, one thing we learned very early, we got some lessons out of Emma. And the first thing that we realized is if we were going to use our website for the knowledge base, we bolted Emma to the existing website at the time. She couldn't answer one question. And really, that was a reflection on our website. If Emma can't get the answer, we knew for a fact our residents weren't. So we took a step back and we actually refocused and imagine this. We built a website that's for our residents, not for the government. We had a government website built for government. Not a small task. We did that all in-house, by the way. That was a partnership between the innovation team and IT. When we started, there were about 1,600 pages with 20,000 documents and images on it. That team went through, was able to reduce those documents to about 1,070. About 90% of those documents hadn't been touched in years. It was just noise. What we ended up with was a beautifully designed website that's very easy to navigate. And bear in mind, to get a canned website just from a company that does government websites would cost you a quarter of a million dollars. Our team met with every single department, talked about, you know, what are your residents? What conversations do you have with your residents? What do they care about? And custom-developed the site. That would be three times the cost of a canned website. We did that for $0. The team did a phenomenal job because we had people doing the right roles. We had the designers and the innovation team that know media and know how to do design, doing design. And we had IT backing them to make sure that we get the functionality working the way it needs to work. Now with the addition of Emma, we get some things we've never had before. So the big challenge with running a government website is you don't always know what people want. You know, what do your residents want to know? I could see where they clicked. I could see, you know, what pages they went to. But now when a question gets answered, we know what questions that they're asking. And I'll flag this. There's two things you should know. You'll see a username on that. That's actually, every question comes in under that. It's anonymized. So I know the question. I don't know who asked it. And we're also working, we've been playing with a feature that will give residents the choice of, can you use my question to improve your model? So we give them total choice on data usage. Now, the beauty of this is we've already fixed several things. We soft-launched Emma over the weekend. She's live now on our website. We have at least 10 items I know of where we didn't have an answer. We now do. And we start to see things that people want. I was really surprised. One of the common things we saw in beta testing and even after go-live was the question, hey, when do I get trash service at this address? So I had a conversation with Donnie this morning. We have that data. We're just not connected to it. So there's opportunities immediately where we can get that plugged in and you'll be able to ask Emma and she'll be able to tell you when your service is scheduled. And then we can actually dig in and see the exact answers that were given by Emma. So the conversation gets better. It's already gotten better in one day and every day it improves. And so does our website. Now we have ourselves on a service-level agreement where if we're not answering a question, we get that fixed. This has been a huge partnership getting Emma together between the City of Amarillo, Dell, Pryon, and Unique, many of who are here in support of the project. And the launch is kind of a big deal. We're the first local government to do something like this, period. We've had a lot of support. It's been great partnership between private sector and government. But I will say this is just the beginning. This is not a celebration. It is a celebration, but it's really the starting gun. We've got the base platform up. You can think of Emma as a new employee. She's been through orientation. We've given her her initial training, but now we're moving on to the on-the-job training. So in the short term, we are going to re-enable navigation, but we're going to do that in the way that our residents want to see it, where it's offered and you get the link. We're looking at the additional sites that aren't on amarillo.gov, like libraries. We're looking at what are the next five languages to enable? Because we discovered that it's interesting when you change languages, context is really important. So we're using native speakers to go through and vet to make sure that the messaging we want to deliver is getting delivered appropriately in that language. I love technology, but you should always cross-check it. We are looking at the solidway scheduling, adding that. We've also been working on ingesting our charter ordinances and building codes because wouldn't it be handy to be able to say, hey, how high can I build a fence? And not only get an answer, but get referred to the part of the charter, the ordinance that gives you that answer. Or how many chickens can I have and get an answer? So we're testing that right now. And then we're also testing it for wayfinding. So we have a spot in the new city hall where we can put up a monitor and you could walk into the elevators and ask, hey, I want to go talk to Rich and be told where Rich lives in the building and how to get there. Or I want to check, you know, I have to do a permit and be told, no, that's actually at the Sims Building and here are directions to get there and here's who you talk to. So in the short term, we have some goals. And then in the more medium, kind of medium term, we're looking really in three kind of areas. We're looking at service integration. So wouldn't it be nice to ask, hey, I'm looking for this book or movie and be told, oh, that's it. These two libraries, it's available. What's the status of a permit? And we're starting in the test system to start to looking at disaster scenarios. So one of the things that Pryon has helped us do is ensure that we don't have hallucinations in times when that could be dangerous. So imagine our flood event. It would have been really handy in multiple languages to ask Emma, okay, where is the flood occurring? Where is shelter? How do I get supplies? And even on the backend of that, what forms do I need to fill out? And maybe have some guidance on how to fill out those federal forms for after-disaster assistance. So we're starting to work with that and test. I could see that having real huge implications for OEM, for the Office of Emergency Management. On the education front, we're looking at ingesting our materials for English as a second language, digital literacy, our citizenship classes, not to replace the instructors, but to give, you know, our residents that are going through education. That could apply to any area where we're teaching residents, where we actually have a coach, 24/7 coach that is multilingual, that can help in those areas. That's also, we partner with Region 16. They're really interested in, you know, how AI could be of assistance and education. And then, of course, from a platform perspective, we're always looking at speed and cost. I think we can actually bring the speed up on Emma so there's less and less delay and it feels more and more conversational. Security, we're always looking at. But the other really interesting piece that we've been working with now is if you think of Emma right now, it's a one-way conversation. I ask a question as a resident. Emma gives me an answer. Well, we're working on a version of Emma that does that in reverse. So, you know, a simple example might be a book a park, a table at a park, and the city has park initiatives. So why not have Emma let them know, hey, did you know that we're doing this project in parks? What do you think about that? Or think about a city survey that's not confined to just multiple-choice answers, where we could actually have residents engage with Emma. We could ask questions about our city and then get open feedback like a corporation does and then gather insights. So Emma has the capability of being both an inbound and an outbound, a two-way conversation. So that's where we're driving. We've had huge success. I have to, I just, I couldn't compliment the team enough, the work that they've done, both with our consultants. But internally, the team's done a phenomenal job, being uncomfortable, learning new things. And I think we're in a position to really keep innovating in a safe way with our public. Any questions?
You know, would you, I know you spoke to it and I know you do almost every time we talk about this, but can you talk about, just briefly, just very short, the uniqueness of the digital right of privacy that you developed and how unique it is and how it protects our citizens' rights and how important that is?
It's absolutely fundamental to what we do, right? And it all starts with transparency. We actually did a lot of research on the front end and we work with Digital Rights Houses. That's their entire focus is, how do you do technology in a way that respects people's rights and privacy and their dignity? I would say I take more phone calls on that than I do technology because cities are trying to figure this out, right? Everyone wants to innovate, but they want to do it in a way that's transparent. And you have to create a safe space for your residents to know that you're going to do the right thing and that you're holding yourselves accountable to doing the right thing. And that's why the resolution is key because it gets renewed every year. So it's almost like a signal flare to the public. For those that are really concerned about it, you know, they should be checking every year that I'm back in front of you with an update to that resolution and it's getting passed. Because if it doesn't, then you know things have changed. And as I said, if you look on our website, we've actually created a specific spot for it. Right now, the resolution is up there. I'll be back in front of council in February with the Amarillo principles that we're driving by, policy updates that we're rolling out and our audit process, which we will also make public. So every year, we get audited. We get audited financially. I get audited on cybersecurity. We're doing the same thing for digital rights and privacy. We're building an audit process with Unile's team so that I'm not holding myself accountable. I'm being held accountable by audit that then gets reported to council. So we're building in that structure and those processes to ensure that when Rich is gone, it doesn't matter who's in my place. It's important, it's visible, and it gets continued.
Okay, thank you. And when you say we're the only local government, we're the only local government on the globe, right?
As far as I know, yeah. We're way ahead on this and I think we can leverage that. There are governments looking at it, but I could ask Dell if they have any, do you have any other local governments that are?
No.
No. No, so we're leading in several areas, not just in the technology, but also in how do we do that in a way that protects our-
Do you mind telling us who our guests are here today?
Sure, absolutely. So we have Pryon. They are the knowledge fabric, if you will, the brain of Emma. We have Dell, so those are with us as well. And then we have Michael Shepard, who is AI at Dell. So we're in rare air having Michael with us, so.
Well, welcome. We appreciate you guys attending the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. And then Unique. Oh, I didn't think Unique was going to, that's right. Unique is here as well, yeah. And they actually do Emma herself. So the person that you see, that is all Unique.
Any other questions for Mr. Gagnon?
Quick, so once we kind of get this fully up and running, I mean, obviously, this has the ability to help people get information, solve problems. How are we going to direct people to this? In other words, I mean, you have a website, but last I heard, I mean, very little, people very rarely just bookmark something and say, I'll go to the city website today. How will we help people become educated on how they can use this?
We're doing that on many fronts. So there are a lot of other things going on. Yeah, they're finding a lot of people are moving from an app to using even web on their mobile. So she works on iOS, Android. It doesn't matter what web interface you use and she's embedded into the website. So that's the first way. But we're also doing some other things, like through our digital literacy education. We're driving awareness there. You're going to start to see more. Now that Emma's actually launched, we have some other initiatives that we'll bring to council, like she can actually give a report on council sessions, right? And what was discussed in council and what the votes were. And there's a lot of initiatives like that where we're going to drive awareness on how to use her. And then there are some other opportunities outside of the city, working with some of the partners like The Place. As the languages come up, we're going to drive a lot of awareness through outside agencies on how to now get access to city services while you're learning English, so.
And some people want to know, are people still going to be answering the phones that they call the city?
Absolutely. As long as I'm here, there's a couple of tenants and those will be in the Amarillo principles as well. A couple of things to note, you should never speak to an AI and not know you're talking to an AI. That will never happen at this city. You will always know it's an AI. In fact, we did testing earlier where we used an actual person instead of a generated character and used AI to modify. So you can actually take video of me and give me Emma's voice and make me say whatever you want to. And residents hated it. I don't like it because it goes into uncanny valley and I don't know am I talking to a computer or a person. So you'll always know that. And two, there will always be human beings available. If you dial 378-3000, you get a live person. You don't get a bunch of call trees. There's always going to be a human being available. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Okay, so if you will allow me, I do have what I see as an opportunity. So Rich, we run into this every time. It all comes down to technology, AI, smart cities, surveillance, 15-minute cities, you name the agenda. Anything that's global economic forum, right, or world economic forum. So tell us specifically, do we have any risks with our data? And are we like closed-circuit TV? Meaning, do we keep everything together? And then if you also could speak to maybe how Regional Crime Center and/or the Amarillo Area Regional Crime Center and those law enforcement cameras, does that stay on, man, I'm going to say it wrong, dark fiber? Does that stay on our own closed?
Yeah.
So talk to that just a little bit.
Several things to say about that. We have one agenda and that is the Digital Dignity Rights and Privacy Agenda. We don't have other agendas. Smart City is a commercial thing to begin with. That's about sales. We have one agenda and that's about how we do technology in a human-first way. Two, that's the reason that we put that space on the website because those policies that apply to those cameras, the controls that are in place, all that has to be published. That is part of what we're going to be held accountable for by audit is they'll be looking at every piece of technology in the departments and making sure that we've done our job to document who's got access to that. Where is it stored? How long is it stored for? Those are not questions that I, as a citizen, want to have to guess about. We need to be transparent about it. So that's our effort over the next year. And then we'll be audited against that by audit so that we know that that's happening.
Right. So if you take the city as a whole, so we're just going to round it off, you've got 30 different departments.
Right.
Most of these departments work on city code standards. Building safety as an example, very, very deep, and national electrical code, international building code, a lot of things that can be data input into this and where it's a great resource. So now you are able to go and maneuver through our system to find answers to general questions. Now, if I wanted to say, hey, I want to know Rich's water bill last month, I can't get your water bill.
No, no, no. And that's why we chose this as our first AI project. This was the perfect project to choose because every bit of data that Emma has access to is on our website because it is our website. There's nothing on our website that isn't public data that we aren't required to make accessible. She doesn't have access to private data. So that is all, like I said, it's all public data. There's zero risk.
Right.
It's all information that you should have anyway. Now, when we start looking at internal systems, because AI is getting placed everywhere, it's not going to be in an Emma system. That would be in something that's isolated and internal.
A quick comparative statement, just because I'm making the most of an opportunity. Can you apply that to this? How much do I have in my own digital privacy and keeping my own and knowing that, you know, when I'm on the phone, what I'm doing, where I'm going, my GPS, all that? Is your system any way comparable to this and in the way of my privacy rights?
No.
And so if I'm comfortable with this device, should I be uncomfortable with your AI model?
No, because the folks that make these and the apps that are on them are accountable to you. And aren't going to publish what their processes and procedures are and aren't being audited by a publicly-funded auditor to ensure that we're doing our job right.
Right. So I'm not making light of that. I'm just saying, we take certain risks with our data just to do business and to communicate. And so the risks that we are taking with this data have been minimized by the way in which- which we're setting it up, and it's not your personal data. It's the city's public data. So I'm just trying to alleviate the concerns.
They're reasonable concerns, and I'll take it a step further. Part of the resolution that you passed, we've taken very seriously. We're starting to build education around that for our own residents. Because there are risks, and a lot of our residents aren't aware of the risks that they take with their data. We just ran our first course at the Axe Community Center with our senior citizens. And as they go through the course, in each section, they're filling out, okay, when you use these platforms, this social media, here's the data that they collect on you. And here are the ways that you can mitigate, how you can reduce your exposure. I think we're trying to go a step beyond not just protecting the data we have access to. The truth is, our number one tenant, you'll see that in the Principles when we publish, is I don't want data. I don't want your data. I don't want it on my systems. If I don't absolutely have a very good reason for having it, I don't want it. Because then I reduce my exposure when it comes to cybersecurity. But we want to take that outside the walls and we're starting to drive education to our own residents on the risks that come along with AI. And I'll give you a simple example. The military tested a version of Emma for PTSD patients. There's a company in Australia that's using it to gather, to do surveys, kind of like we want to do, you know, with information on programs. What they're finding is people will talk to that AI and they will say things to it that they wouldn't say to another human being. You know, the soldiers can open up because they're not being judged. That's dangerous because, you know, we live in a social media world where we live in the attention economy. It's whatever I can do to keep you plugged into me as long as possible. Well, what happens when that transitions to the intimacy economy? You know, what better profile of you can I build when you'll just spill your soul to me because I'm talking to you through AI? And we want to make sure that our residents are prepared for that because it's coming, AI is coming. But we want to have an educated population that knows how to make the best of the technology without falling into the ills that come with it.
Councilman?
In reality, my opinion strictly, is people are worried about you as being a big brother, but in reality, we need to worry about all these Ring cameras. They invade your privacy more than anything you'll ever do. I mean, to be perfectly truthful, everybody that has one of these and that Ring camera, you're being put out there where everybody can see you. So, yeah, we don't need to do things in public that you don't do behind closed doors, so.
Or vice versa.
So, okay, so greatly appreciate that. I am going to try not to engage with our public in a discussion. So do you have something that's super quick? We typically, Ms. Cassie, we typically don't allow citizens to rise and speak since we gave you public comment on this one item. If you'll ask your one question, we'll let Rich handle it just because this is brand new and I am willing to take a little extra time to make sure that we launch it right. Come on up.
Cassie Green, and I'm an Amarillo resident. So I, is this, okay. I believe I have in front of me the Digital Rights and Privacy Resolution. And my only issue, I have a lot of issues with it. Consider me an old soul, like I'm a relatively young person, but I'm an 80-year-old in my heart. So anyway, my issue with this is it's just a resolution. I would like, before we move forward, for an ordinance to be on the charter concern, like even this, you know? But this to be an ordinance on the charter, so I feel safe.
So in the issue of an ordinance carrying more power than a resolution, Mr. City Manager, do we have any issues with if council was going to do that? So I direct back to you, Rich, that goes a little further in your initiative, right?
Yeah, and actually, that's ideals because this was just a starting point for us and it gave us direction, a commitment from council to say, yeah, this is important to us. That's what we're working on. In fact, I have two days dedicated next week with Digital Rights House to kind of dig in, get the principles established. We can come back with an ordinance that makes this, that solidifies this. Yeah, yeah, I'm totally-
Ms. Cassie?
And can I say something else? I've heard nothing but great things about you. You're like a genius and you're so nice.
No, I apologize. I apologize. We limited you to one public statement. Rich, you will disregard or disregard everything she said.
Can we participate in the ordinance?
Yeah, when I come back, we are actually starting to build public engagement on it. So I'll actually reach out to you directly and get you involved, yeah?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Rich, great job.
No problem.
Thanks, Rich.
That's what we're here for.
Anything else for Mr. Gagnon?
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Looking for a motion on item 9B.
Okay, I move to award an agreement for digital human software to Dell in the amount of $553,052.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, item 9C. Thank you to our guests for attending. We appreciate you guys weathering a long meeting with us. Ms. Coggins, are you running this one? Item 9C.
This is our variance, alcohol variance?
So this is an ordinance, I'm sorry, Stephanie Coggins, City Secretary. This is an ordinance that would provide a variance to distance regulations to, which prohibit the sale of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a public school. So we've got two of these today. This first one, ordinance 8172, is for Sea Market. Sea Market's located near 34th in Georgia. The applicant is operating a grocery store with a primary business model of off-premise consumption that they are looking at. In hopes of adding options and opportunity for the community to have the ability to buy Asian products, the applicant is proposing the sale of Asian beer and wine. The applicant applied for their alcohol business license and ultimately, they were denied on October 15th of this year. Denial on the alcohol business license was based on the fact that the proposed site does not meet the minimum separation distance of 300 feet from Coronado Elementary School, which is an AISD school that's located approximately 17.5 feet as measured. So it's important to note, distance from schools per the alcohol beverage code is measured as the crow flies method, which is a direct line from property line to property line. The surrounding area currently has two alcohol business licenses within this 300-foot setback to the school. Those are 34th Street Discount, which is located at 2514 Southwest 34th. That was issued in December of 2004. And Toot and Totem at 34th in Georgia, 3320 South Georgia. That was granted by a variance in 2017. So each of these locations are considered grandfathered, so they can continue to sell alcoholic beverages, both on-premise and off-premise. And if you were to grant a variance to the applicant in this case, they would be able to move from off-premise to on-premise. This location is operating in an area zoned general retail, which allows for use of a grocery store with off-premise alcohol sales. This also, just so you know, allows for on-premise sales with a restaurant. It does not allow for any on-premise sales of 50% or more, which would be a bar. And then on this particular location, it's very important to note, well, I'm skipping ahead, I'm sorry. We did reach out to AISD to notify them of this variance request, and they responded to us in an email, which is in your packet, that they are in support of issuance of this variance. I'm going to skip forward to the map real quick. What you'll notice, Coronado Elementary School is highlighted there. And then the red square is the property that is wishing to apply for this, that we denied. The star on your map there shows where they are located. This is in a strip mall. This is all owned by one property owner and licenses are issued by property owner. And so if you were to grant a variance for this, then everything else within that property boundary would also be wet for alcohol sales. City Council may consider a variance if you find the enforcement of this setback is any of the following: it is not in the best interest of the public, constitutes waste or inefficient use of land or other resources, will create an undue hardship on the applicant, will not serve its intended purpose, will not be effective or necessary, and will not, and/or will not be in the best interest of the community. So, and I want to check, is the owner of Sea Market here today? I don't believe they made it. They did provide some reasoning for their request, and that is included in your packet as well. So any questions I can answer on this process?
No, ma'am. Council, any discussion on this one?
So how many, I mean, how many of these exemptions are there in the city?
There are not many. There are, and I should have brought that list, it may be around 10 or so. I'm going to look for Anthony because he's here. City Secretary took over this program about a year ago. There are about 10 variances. There are about four additional ones that I believe were denied on that list. So historically, when we've had variances, we reach out to the schools, and if the school opposes it, historically, that has not been granted. Now, in this case, AISD is in support of this one. I will tell you, this site's a little special. There's previous requests for Pizza Nomad, if you're familiar with that. It's on the western end of that strip mall. Back in 2020, that variance was denied. And then there was another one for mixed beverage in that same location, and that was denied back in 2003.
There was a Toot and Totem on that corner until about a year and a half ago, which did sell alcoholic beverages. And that's probably only 75 feet from there to the Toot and Totem, so I would say we need to pass it.
And so if we allow this variance, does that, so Pizza Nomad would also get it because they're in that center? Is that correct?
Yes, and I'm going to look at Brian to correct me if I'm wrong. They would need to reapply, but if they were to apply after this passes, then it would be considered when we would be able to approve that.
Okay, was, I guess that was prior to us, but I guess did AISD not want that one?
Correct. They were, they opposed it at that time.
But they're okay with this one? Interesting.
To clarify, not of mixed beverage use?
No, it was selling beer and wine.
This one here as well? Beer and wine?
This one is off-premise. So Pizza Nomad applied to be able to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption.
Okay.
Sea Market is a grocery store, and they are selling for off-premise consumption.
So AISD opposed an on-premise license, correct?
Correct.
But they're not opposing buy and take somewhere else?
In this case. I don't know if that would be, in every case, but yes, sir.
I'm just in the examples that you give.
In this case, they are approving or they are supporting an off-premise to buy it and take it elsewhere.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, once you issue the variance, it's all eligible, as I understand, correct?
It is, that's correct.
Not just off-premises, but others as well, so.
Yes.
And AISD does understand that in their email?
It do.
And then tell me the mixed beverage would allow for that as well?
If it's with a restaurant, yes, sir, under the current zoning.
As long as it's 50%?
So once a license is issued and it's grandfathered into that property, then it comes down to zoning and to wet/dry status at the county level. And so at that point in time, general retail would allow a restaurant with mixed beverage in that location. It would not allow for a bar if they have-
Right.
-alcohol sales greater than-
What's the percentage again on that as far as a food establishment?
Oh, greater than 50%.
50%, yeah. So you do still have that restriction even if you pass this variance?
Correct.
So you're still restricted from a bar, but you're not restricting, you know, any kind of restaurant?
Correct.
Bar establishment, okay. Any other questions? Okay, would entertain a motion. Thank you, Mrs. Coggins.
I'll make a motion, then we accept the, whatever number it is, what number is it?
8172.
8172, as stated.
To add, you've got to select at least one of these items or any of these items, and we have to note that in your ordinance, the reason that you're selecting it.
We've got to put that in the order in each one of those?
So you can pick if there's one you believe or if there's more than one, but we need you to make a motion with which of these items that you find allows for the variance.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we accept 8172. It's in the best interest of the public. How many do I need to give? All of them?
One or all. One is fine.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I've got one question.
Yes.
Have you gone through one of these before?
We did, right? We voted against one in Council Place 1.
In 2020? You weren't quite in council yet.
No, I thought we voted against. No, 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 I'm sorry. What I went through, we voted for, but it was package sales only. So I have gone through this one other time. It was the one that was close to Amtech.
It was the GoBrands.
It was, yeah. And we voted that through.
And it was similar to this?
It was even easier. It was a delivery. So you place an order and you could pick up, but then they delivered. So they were more or less just small warehousing. This one would actually be, you know, potential consumption.
They didn't allow their customers onsite. It was, they had delivery people that took it from their site to the-
But it seems the school district is less concerned about this because it's not onsite consumption. I mean, I don't know if they gave a reason, but it seems if they're in favor of this, been opposed to others.
Actually, if you go from the school around, it's going to be a lot more than 200 feet to get to that door.
To the front door?
Yeah.
Well, and Anthony just brought to my attention-
Do we have a motion on the floor?
If we have a motion, we don't have a second here. We may have a little further, no, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second. We may have a little more clarification.
Anthony Spanell, Environmental Health Director, just mentioned AISD may have changed their approach on these since we had that variance in 2020 that was denied.
Okay. And then like, there's no notification of the public, like a planning and zoning. I mean, it's just-
No, that's a great question. These do not require public notice. They don't require public hearing, so.
Okay, so to recap, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a five-o vote. Item 9D is Ms. Coggins again.
Cafe Moonwater has issued a request for variance. Their ordinance 8173. And we do have Marcy Abramson here today, so we'll give Ms. Abramson some time to visit with you after we go through the details on this. The applicant is operating a boutique cafe with a primary business model of adding on-premise consumption. They are proposing the sale of beer and wine. They applied for and they were ultimately denied an alcohol business license on October 28th, 2024. The ultimate reason they were denied was that the site does not meet the minimum separation distance of 300 feet that a business selling alcohol beverages needs to maintain from a private school. San Jacinto Christian Academy at 501 South Carolina is approximately 59.5 feet away from this business. And as we discussed earlier, this is measured on an as the crow flies basis from property line to property line. The cafe is operating in an area zoned like commercial, which allows for the use of a restaurant with on-premise alcohol sales. The surrounding area currently has one alcohol business license within the 300-foot setback. Again, it's important to note that this location is grandfathered, and that's the old Tesco's a brand company. They are grandfathered in for any future requests. And if you choose to issue a variance on this, once issued an alcohol business license, then this location would be able to switch back and forth between on and off-premise permits. On the map on this one, you can see San Jacinto Christian Academy is highlighted. And then the property just south of it there with the red box around it and the star is the applicant location. City Council may consider a variance if you find any of the six items on the screen. If you'd like me to read those again, I will, but they're listed there for you. I want to invite, well, I want, first of all, we did try to reach out to San Jacinto Christian Academy, tried to reach out to them in several different ways and never did hear back from them. So I don't have a position from the school on that. At this time, I would invite Marcy up to talk about her variance request.
Hi, I'm Marcy Abramson. I do have a card from the San Jacinto Christian Academy. I talked to Josh Moody, and he said that they couldn't sign a letter, but if you wanted to call him, he could tell you that they were okay with us selling beer and wine.
Okay.
So, and we've been there for six years, and we've communicated- So, and, um, we've been there for six years and we've communicated really well with them. And, uh, and it would just be for lunch. We, we're not a bar.
This one would be a little different than the other one, so we would only be approving just this one establishment, um, so it wouldn't blanket the, the strip center or anything else around it.
So, there is one other property that is highlighted in the red on the map?
Okay.
That is actually owned by the same property owner. Those are connected. It would include both of those premises.
On-premise, uh, no mixed beverage, just, uh, beer and wine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, how many feet to the bar down the street? Did anybody look? 750 feet or something? Do we know how far to the handlebar? Okay. I think there's, well, I know there's.
There are, there's bars on both sides.
Right. What's that? I mean, I, I didn't step it off. I'm guessing. So, um.
Old Tesco's Brewing Company is the, is the old star of your map.
Right.
That was the license, the D license.
We are. Okay. All right, thank you for being here.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Counsel, you have questions for Mrs. Coggins?
And I want to add just a clarification if I can. Since they are in light commercial, light commercial does allow for bars as well. And so, if approved, then that could potentially change to a bar, um, or any other type of alcohol license.
Off question. Is there a petition process to say like, this was approved and years down the road, someone goes in and puts in a bar? Is there a petition process or anything at state or at the local level to remove that?
There potentially might be at the state level by changing the wet/dry status, but that's.
Once the variance has been passed, it's, it's, it's in stone. So, because that's really the only power that the city council might have or governing authority, whether that be a county or city has on that particular issue under the TABC code, so.
Uh, to be specific to the Marcy, though, in Moonwater, this would become the first bar to only sell beer and wine.
Right.
Right. So, like, it, it wouldn't necessarily constitute this request. I mean, it's a leading request. You'd still have a, an additional variance to be a very successful bar. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I, I think if this is, if it's issued in the future, it could be whatever else it wanted to be, just, just so you know. I mean, it could be.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm asking. We, we've only asked for, like, she's requesting beer and wine sales only, not mixed beverage.
We couldn't limit that in the future.
Oh, okay. Then that's different than.
For what she's requesting, which is totally okay.
So, wet's wet.
Wet is wet.
Okay. Not what I understood. Concerns, counsel? Would entertain a motion on item nine D.
Uh, Mayor, I, I think actually, I don't want to delay this anymore. I, I wouldn't mind taking his card. I, I would just like to talk with him, uh, Josh, on that. With delaying this, I might, I mean, would that cause you problems? Okay. And I, I believe, I just, I just want to make sure that, that, I'd just like to talk with him and maybe if we could bring that back on the next agenda, just to make sure that, that everybody's on the same page with that.
Yeah, so, um, would you, you want to table it?
If we could, just.
Yeah, so if you'll, if you'll just move to table it, I think that way it'll come back up on the next agenda.
Okay, I'd, uh, I'd make a motion to table, uh, nine D until next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is tabled until next session, and then, um, if we can get that card, does any of other council want to reach out to Mr. Moody to visit with him?
Well, I was gonna say, Les, you'll bring that to us next, counsel.
I can if there is anything that comes up.
Um, the other one was Austin's Pub. I thought it was right across the street, and I know it's not in, um.
It's, it's across, well, it's on the side of the street.
But I mean, you know, with the cafeteria going further east, it's, it's within a few, it's within probably, what, 75 feet? They're just not currently doing business, but I think it's still a bar. So, we may have precedent of what, what's already there.
Okay.
So, um, might be interesting for you to, to bring that back. Ms. Marcy, I work with staff, so we have a better, uh, kind of comprehensive understanding of what else is around you.
Okay, nine D has been tabled. Item nine E, Ms. Coggins, are you up on this one? This is the, uh, city charter, the election for Prop E.
Yes, Mayor and counsel, this is an ordinance that will amend our charter based on the election that we held on November 5th. This is the first step, the approval of the ordinance. This will lead us to, um, provide authority to the city secretary's office to share that amended charter with the secretary of state and enact it, publish what we need to publish in the newspaper, and then enact that new charter.
Very good. I think we're all familiar with item Prop E, and I don't even know, um, why we vote on it after we voted on it as a community, but we are gonna vote on it. So, we won't ask the question of what happens if you vote no. Um, any questions on item, item nine E?
No.
Okay. Would ask for a motion.
I move to, ordinance number eight-one-seven-four is presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Riddlesberger, if, if I could get you to help me with this one and kind of come up here, this is, uh, some monies that, that may be, uh, approved by council to help kind of a stopgap. So, if you could give, uh, an update on, on the meeting we were in together, kind of how this came to you and what your thoughts are.
I'm hoping I have a PowerPoint, but, uh, there we go, yeah. So, yeah, we had a, a meeting with some very conservative folks. In fact, we've had a lot of, uh, individuals coming to us recently concerned about the gap that we're gonna have, uh, with the opening of Transformation Park that's not gonna be coming until, uh, the spring. So, the concern is that we've got, uh, obviously cold weather that's coming up and a lot of unsheltered folks that are, uh, living out on the streets. And so, um, their concern is that those numbers are gonna be rising and that, uh, they don't have enough places to go, uh, to stay safe. And so, um, some of the things that they're, that they're lacking and some of the, the concerns that were brought is that a lot of the enforcement is now, uh, taking away some of their, their supplies such as tents, blankets, uh, that kind of thing. So, they're losing those things. So, then now they're left without those, uh, as they're still on the streets, so. Um, and right now, uh, we don't have any, uh, case management or outreach that's taking place on the streets during the nighttime. So, all of our, our homeless outreach is all during the day, during, uh, Monday through Friday. So, uh, we don't have anything that's taking place in the night whenever the temperature's like tonight. It's just really plummeting whenever the, the, the sun goes down. So, um, that's something that we, we took a good hard look at. And so, um, let's see here. And then we've got some of our nonprofit homeless agencies, uh, that, that need to be able to receive some assistance pretty quickly. And I, I think that this'll, this plan that I've put forth, I'm gonna, I think that that'll be able to help us do that. So, here's what I'm kind of requesting is a hundred thousand dollar budget to fund, uh, two coming home outreach staff, and we're gonna pay them overtime. The reason I want to do that is because these, uh, outreach workers, they're the professionals. They know what they're doing. They've, they've been doing this a, a long time and they're very good at it. They have good relationships with the folks in the, in the field. If I were to try and hire new people, it would be recreating the wheel and it would just, uh, not be very successful. And we want this to be successful because we're looking at this winter, uh, is, is really key because Transformation Park will be coming at the end of this. So, and then the second part is that I'm, uh, requesting, uh, funding for the, the budget to be able to operate this. Um, so again, uh, current staff versus new hire, uh, coming home staff is very well-trained, trusted. They have relationship with these folks. They have relationships with our shelters, with our, uh, warming station. They have, uh, relationships with the people and, and all the agencies that we know, so we can be able to get them, uh, directly into those, uh, different places. Uh, we can monitor the, the encampments, the abandoned structures. So, the plan is that they'll be out there on the streets, going to these places, but they'll also be going to the, uh, to the shelters and making good handoffs with those folks to make sure that we're getting them into the shelters. That's the key with this, is that, uh, I, I don't want to reinvent, uh, shelters and Code Blue and all that. I want to have our, our staff be able to get out there and, and work with them, work individually with them, come up with a plan for them. If it's freezing cold, let's get you into a shelter. Let's figure out what we need to, to do to get over here. The shelters, Faith City and Salvation Army have already told us that they, they drop their barriers during the, the winter, and so they're gonna allow people to come in, so we need to get them in there. We're gonna have our staff there that's gonna be boots on the ground to see exactly what that transaction looks like, to make sure that what they're saying is right and what our clients are saying is right. So, we're gonna be able to, to grease those wheels. And let's see here. Again, again, we're gonna be spending time at those shelters, so we're gonna off, also be able to supplement their volunteers or their staff with more, uh, of our staff that can provide case management. They can provide all the knowledge that they have inside those facilities. So, we'll be able to actually supplement their, their staffing and their, uh, operations with what we've got. So, talking with our, uh, Code Blue folks, that there was an average of about 50 activations, uh, in the last few years, so they're expecting the same this year. Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna have the, the outreach workers working, uh, beyond, uh, their current shift, so it'd be 5:00 PM to 3:00 AM. Well, there'll be two, uh, employees because we want it to be safe. Uh, so that's gonna be about a $50,000, uh, investment to get them, uh, that for those 50 activations. Uh, and then, of course, the, uh, operations budget, some of the supplies and things that we're gonna need is those flashlights, a lot of the emergency equipment that we, we typically carry. We're gonna make sure we've got plenty of that. We're also gonna do a lot of things involving like the transportation, some rapid rehousing, homeless, uh, nonprofit, uh, operation, I'm sorry, things that they need in order to do some of the operations there, too. Uh, so what, the way we're gonna do it is I want to have kind of an expedited, uh, ability for me or my deputy director to make decisions. Hey, this is a, an, uh, uh, an expense that we need to be doing right away. We don't want to sit and wait and go through a lot of processes. We want to be able to, to do that right away. So, the total estimated to be 50,000 for staffing and 50,000 for operations, uh, but I'm making a specific request to, to allow that to be flexible so that if I need, maybe to have three, uh, staff members out there or four, uh, that I've got the flexibility to put more towards staffing, or maybe we need some more supplies just so that, that, that whole budget would be flexible for me able to, maybe, me to be able to do that. And so, at the end of this, this, this is one thing we want to do here, is we want to kind of evaluate what we're doing to see what kind of outcomes we come up with. So, is, are we making a, a difference with these staff members? Is it, are we, uh, seeing, uh, you know, a decrease in our unsheltered? Are we getting more people into the shelters? We want to, we want to take all of these things and, and put that together, so, uh, number of, uh, people that are using those places, the, the feedback from our staff, you know, what, what are they telling us? How was it successful? What, what were some pitfalls? Um, and then, of course, uh, some of our follow-up with our nonprofits that we help, what, what does that look like? Were they compliant? Was it helpful? And, uh, if it's something that we could maybe move forward with in the future. Um, and then, of course, figuring out what that's gonna look like with the transition to Transformation Park in the future. How do, how do we, uh, take what we learned from this and then move that into Transformation Park? Because while I'd love to say that Transformation Park's gonna be the answer and it's gonna cure everything for, uh, amorous homelessness, it's not. We're, there's still gonna be challenges that are out there, but is this gonna be a way that we can get those challenges and, and work through them and come up with some solutions? And I think it will be. I think getting, getting people out there on the streets, building relationships, that's the key to, to getting this going. That's all I got.
So, Jason was, was good to really kind of put this together. Um, I was part of the conversation and I, I, I guess approach it from a preactive or proactive versus reactive. Um, you know, I feel like we do have this winter gap. I think Transformation Park will solve some of that. Um, but I, I believe that, you know, with the population we have right now and the, and, and if we get into cold winter months, which we would expect to, I, I think we could easily see the bottom line affected negatively in, in picking people up, you know, the morning of, healthcare needs, medical assistance, um, you know, per, fire prevention. So, if you burn a house down, you know, trying to stay warm or, or whatever, then, you know, you're rolling fire trucks, you're condemning property, you're, you're doing demolition. So, we have seen this historically, so I believe that we can justify some of this cost just in proactive, uh, remedies versus reactive. And then, um, I also see this as a component moving forward of giving Transformation Park the best likelihood or chance of success. This would be, this would remain with your Department of Community Development. It'd be a, a fund that you could easily get to, uh, you know, if you had some really hot months in the summer, um, you've got to get to a cooling station. Once again, we get back to the winter. We, we've done this before, and I believe we'd have better outcomes. So, that's, that's why we're requesting the money. Um, now, if we go through a, a light, mild winter and we don't have any of this, then you, you won't spend any of the money potentially.
Uh, questions for Mr. Riddlesberger, counsel?
And so, the funding source on the, this is not, this is not originally in the budget, so this is, and the funding source on this is?
Coming from our working budget and the ongoing, uh, not the one-time fund.
Okay, got it.
Would not Transformation Park need these employees at some point?
It's very possible. Uh, that's, that's, I've actually been, uh, conversing with Mark Zimmerman at Transformation Park that we may actually roll this into something that they, they operate. But I think it's important for us to have a connection with our coming home team and Transformation Park. So, at this point, that's kind of the way I prefer it, that we've got the outreach portion and they take care of the shelter portion.
So, are you asking for one year, a hundred thousand dollars, that's it? No more for next year?
Uh, we may, we may do it again next year. We'll see, we'll see how the outcomes come.
The thing is, I mean, we put a lot of money into this Transformation Park.
Sure.
We've already participated quite well. Uh, my opinion is, what I understood, Transportation Park was gonna take care of itself once we get to a point. Now, my po, my point being here, you're asking a hundred this year, is it gonna be 200 next year? Or does Transformation Park actually do what they were intending to do?
So, I, I don't, I want to make sure we get a delineation of what, what the differences are. Transformation Park is gonna be that shelter piece. That's a, that's the, the, uh, re, the resource that we have that we're gonna be taking them to, just like Salvation Army or Faith City. It's where we're taking them. What we're talking about here is the outreach portion, which we are doing out in the streets. So, uh, we're going to meet people where they're at. Uh, we're, we're getting calls about, uh, folks that are sleeping in their cars at Walmart. We're going out there to find them. Transformation Park's not gonna have a team that's going out and finding people. They're gonna be staying and doing their operations there at the facility. This is something that the city, that we've been doing in the coming home program since 2018, very, very successful. This, we have one of the, the models that, in fact, uh, our state actually leans on us for a city our size, that we're doing it well and we're doing it very well, so.
Do you have documentation on what the coming home has brought home? And I would like to see.
Oh, yeah.
Numbers.
Sure.
That backed up what, what was being said here, because I was under the impression, and I think we talked about it maybe a year ago, I'm not sure. But I was under the impression that we were basically done with Transformation Park.
Well, but the delineation that we're making, we're, we're not done with community development. And, and I'm intending to put this hundred thousand dollars in its built-in budget so that those, uh, those hires could be utilized year-round. And then, we would like to see the ROI. We would like to see the statistics coming back. But, um, once again, the Transformation Park piece is key in helping to remedy the problem, getting as many people from unsheltered to sheltered, then back into permanent housing and transition and, and back to work and, and viable. Um, now, what community development is set up to do is a little bit more like urgent care. Um, you know, so this is everything from, you know, an unsheltered individual to an individual who's sheltered, but then couldn't afford the, the gas bill and they have no heat in their home. And so, um, they are going to these shelters to get warm before they're going back home, even though they have a residence. So, if you didn't like that, Councilman Sherlin, I think we could move to our one-time fund and then use this more like a pilot program, see how successful it is. Give you a little bit more, um, it'd come out of the other three million that we've got left versus, but it'd still be the same funding from the working.
I mean, I, I could do that. I just, I mean, I want to see the success story. We hear about it, but I don't see it. I mean.
I'll bring them.
I mean, I want to see it on camera or everybody can see it.
Bring them and stand them and then you'll meet them. That's what I want you to do.
I just want to see, we're providing a win.
Sure.
And I want the people to know what they're providing for their money.
I love it.
And I think we need to be very transparent with it. I'm good with that, Mayor, if you're good for you.
We have the return on the investment already in community development. What I'm asking you guys to do is to give him a, a, a little bit of latitude with a fund that's more like, uh, urgent need, cold weather, uh, operation. And so, uh, counsel, any further questions on Mr. Riddlesberger request?
Nope.
I appreciate you, Jason.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Um, so, Councilman Sherlin, I'm gonna ask, uh, you good with me leaving it the way it was presented, so it comes in the ongoing budget? Okay, great.
it the way it was presented? So, it comes in the ongoing budget? Okay, great. Would ask for a motion on 9F.
I moved it up. Ordinance number 8175 is presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on item 9F. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Riddlesberger, thank you for spinning that up so quickly. Item 9G, Mr. Hartman, this is you for our Tyson Water Supply Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, item 9G is a resolution for your consideration approving the water supply agreement with Tyson Fresh Meats. I'm going to let Buzz Pishker come up, who Buzz is our representative on the negotiation team, and I'm going to let him give you the details.
While Buzz is making his way up, I believe the legal counsel for Tyson will be calling in. And Mayor, that conference phone is right by you. So, when that goes off, just answer that phone.
Do you need this up here or is it good to stay where it's at?
It can stay where it's at.
Real good.
Buzz, how you doing today, sir?
I'm doing fine, Mayor.
Go, go ahead and take off.
Can you hear me okay? All right.
Yes, sir.
Don't, don't get nervous. I do have some, you should have in front of you, each of you, my prepared remarks. Mayor, City Council members, City Manager and staff, Buzz Pishker, Senior Planning and Operations Consultant. As you know, I have represented the city in discussions with Fresh, Tyson Fresh Meats Incorporated, related to the renewal of the water supply agreement between the two parties. My comments today are related to the water supply agreement and accompanying resolution coming before Council this evening. And what I'd like to do for just a few seconds is share some information related to the process and the agreement reached by the two parties. Number one, the discussions were elongated. They were spread over a 15-month period. And interestingly enough, during that period of time, we had three face-to-face meetings here in Amarillo, which was good that they came and we sat down and talked. We had three different Tyson complex managers participate, three different city managers participate, along with two mayors and two sets of Tyson legal counsel. So, we had a significant group and transition going through the entire time. They all participated in these discussions. The common things were Floyd Hartman was the guiding force for the city throughout the entire process. And of course, our attorney, Brian McWilliams, also provided legal expertise through the entire process. In my opinion, I would describe the process as professional in every way. It was collegial. There were issues on both parties, as you know, and we worked through those. I consider myself really privileged to have had the opportunity to participate on behalf of the city and during the entire project. I know Brian Bajewski is on the phone or going to be on the phone from Tyson, and he may have some comments to add after my presentation. So, you should be aware of that. Section, item two, the agreement you have before you includes some key things that I want to at least highlight for you. Number one, it has an initial term of 25 years and then followed by two voluntary 10-year extensions. So, the contract as it sits could have a 45-year life, significant. And by the way, the first draft had 20 years. Tyson had asked us to extend it to 25, and as you know, Council was willing to do that. A requirement for the installation of a backflow device, which has been completed by Tyson and installed ahead of the timetable we had been discussing throughout the negotiation, and that was all done at their expense. This brings the complex into compliance with the city's backflow ordinance, very important. It also includes a pricing structure that gives Tyson the flexibility to manage the rates to be charged during the term of the agreement and a prolonged transition period to become in parity, in parity with the city's rate ordinances. There's a stipulation in there that the complex will also be in compliance with the city water conservation and drought contingency plan. And then, lastly, and I think of note, the city made a commitment to install metering equipment, which would allow constant flow and transmit that information. This item has also been already achieved and is installed and in place. So, in summary, I would say this, the agreement extends a 50-plus-year water supply relationship between the city and a key corporate citizen, Tyson Fresh Foods. Throughout the process, it became apparent to me that Tyson is both a valued member of the Amarillo community as well as an engaged corporate supporter of the local economy. And that was, been acknowledged all the way through. This agreement, I believe, should facilitate the continuation of that legacy. Those are my comments. I don't know if Brian's on the phone or not, and I would take any questions.
Not yet. Questions for Buzz, gentlemen?
Make sure you work, Buzz.
Do you want to recap the five-year incremental, 10-year, kind of how that goes?
I'd be glad to do that.
If you don't mind, just to run us back through it.
I'd be happy to do that. The, the agreement has an 11-year window. The first year will be, and it's already in place, the rate increase for Tyson will be exactly what the inside city water commercial rate was, starting in year two through year six. The, in, the gap between the Tyson, current Tyson rate and the current inside-city rate will be reduced by one-fifth each year, plus any increases in the normal rate structure.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Hang on just one second. We'll bring you on one minute. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
All right, one second. Thank you.
Okay, and then year seven through 11, if Tyson's complex is still outside the city limits, they would transition over the next five years to the outside-city rate. So, they will be in compliance with your rate ordinances.
Very good. Are you ready for the attorney?
I am.
Okay, sir, we have you. If you don't mind, go ahead and state your name so we've got you on the record.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Brian Bajewski, and I'm corporate counsel for Tyson Foods, representing the beef facility in Amarillo. And, yes, Mayor Stanley, we've been acquainted. Buzz, we've, we've certainly been acquainted over the past, what'd you say, 15 months? Yeah, it's, we've had a lot of back and forth on this one, and notably, per your earlier mention of there being on both sides, key individuals having revolved through for, for both, both entities. Yeah, we are obviously considering where we're at in this thing. You know, we are in favor of executing the agreement as it is. That being said, you know, we, we were hoping to get to a different point or a, a different way procedurally, you know. The ability to have an extension in light of the notice of termination that had been sent out previously, it really didn't work. Again, you know, Buzz's recitation of the facts of the agreement are on point. And the city, excuse me, Tyson would like to keep the dialogue open with the city regarding any potential for annexation and further partnering and how the two entities go forward in their relationship, multi-decade relationship and in the decades to come.
Right. Brian, we really appreciate you jumping on with us and to kind of add to the conversation. And so, thank you for your time and involvement in what's been a long negotiation, but it's worked out, I think, as good as we had hoped. And so, appreciate your time here. I would ask Council if you have any questions for either Brian or Buzz on this topic. Any, any comments?
Nope.
Okay. Brian, short and sweet. We appreciate you and thank you for joining the meeting here tonight.
Thank you all. You have a good evening.
You too, sir. Thank you. Okay. Buzz, you have anything else further?
No, I, other than I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate working with the people in Amarillo. I've been here a lot longer than I had anticipated, but it's a pleasure to represent you and work with Floyd and the staff. So, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, it was ours. You're a true professional and you made it, you made it easy for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Would ask for a motion on item 9G.
Resolution number 12-10-24-2.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second from Councilman Tips. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 9G passes with a 5-0 vote. We're going to move on to item 9H. And is it Ms. Johnny that's working this one? AMW. We need a board member, don't we?
We do need a board member. We reopened the applications as requested at the last council meeting, and we received nine, nine applications. Your current members are listed on the board. And as a reminder, you appointed Ms. McCart, Dr. Schilling, and Mr. Simpson to serve terms through December of 2027.
Thank you. Council, do you have your list of applicants? And does anybody want to make a nomination?
I'd make a motion to appoint Glenn Crowder for the vacancy on the Animal Management Welfare Advisory Board.
Second.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this one? All in favor for Glenn Crowder, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You have what you need on that one?
I do. Our next board is the Amarillo Hospital District. This board has seven members, and we are seeking one member to serve a term through 2026. As a reminder, you did reappoint Mr. Alexander and Ms. Bonner to serve.
Right. And this was the one I had appointed, Dr. Rolf Habersam.
Correct.
And he was unable to serve.
Correct. So, we did receive three applications for this board upon reopening.
I'll make a motion for Daryl Wertz.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this one? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. East Gateway, number two.
Yes, sir. So, initially, we did not receive any applications for this board. So, you guys requested we reopen the applications, and we've done that. We did have one applicant that the staff identified today, who is Randy Whipple. And as one of the founders of the WRCA, he has invested interest in seeing Amarillo's economy grow. He's also spent many hours in conversation with planning about bringing projects to the Tiers Two Zone. And from those conversations, Drew Brassfeld, the Assistant Director of Planning, feels very confident that Mr. Whipple has a strong grasp of financial acumen, and he has no doubt that he would add tremendous value to any tiers discussion. Mr. Brassfeld did mention that he's spoken with Mr. Whipple, and Mr. Whipple is very interested in serving if appointed.
I would say that I had one individual reach out to me. Matt Tavern said he would be willing to volunteer on this. So, we have two, Randy Whipple and Matt Tavern. Do I have anyone that would like to make a nomination?
I'll nominate Randy Whipple.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second for Mr. Whipple on East Gateway, Tiers Two. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Johnny. Okay, item 9K, AEDC expenditure request. Mr. Carter, please come on up.
He's waited patiently.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning. Almost.
This would consider approval of expenditures that I put in the packet. I did want to go over three or four of those before I opened it up for questions, if that's okay. The second item is for marketing. That's baseball tickets. I knew that there probably would be some questions about that. I just wanted to kind of talk about why we did that. I think this was our third or fourth year to have baseball tickets. We bought these to entertain clients. We entered into an agreement last year. So, last, this last season, the '24 season, was the first of a three-year agreement. This past year, we took 21 either prospects or existing businesses or gave them the tickets. And then, when we did not use the tickets, we tried to disseminate those to city staff. So, that way that they were, that they were being used. The next thing that I wanted to talk about was actually the next item there for project support. That's appraisal for two properties that we're looking at, that we've talked to, I believe, to our board and to y'all in executive session. So, we've got to get an appraisal on that to see what those values are before we, see if we can move forward with a purchase. Then you move down to another project support, Business Park Rail Maintenance. We had a rail issue this past week out at the plant. One of our switches seized up, and we had to call for an emergency, some emergency work to be done because GRI was not able to operate because it couldn't make switches. So, that is that item. And then, also, I wanted to talk about the West Texas Enterprise Challenge. We need to let WT know. I know they need to start working on their materials to get this program out. And so, I wanted to talk about that one. We did ask for the original amount from two years ago. That has been the historic amount, is the $500,000 for the grants, and then $80,000 is the administration fee that we pay the West Texas A&amp;M to administer that program. But I certainly would answer any questions about any of the others as well.
Appreciate it, sir. Any questions?
No.
No, sir.
Okay.
Ask for a motion on item 9K.
I move we approve the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation expenditure request as presented.
I have a motion and a second from place one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Captain.
Appreciate you staying. One more here. So, we have resolution for our gateway designs, I'm going to say.
That's correct. This item would be, we, we looked at this, I don't know, maybe last, last council meeting or a couple of council meetings ago and, and had discussion. And kind of what we landed on for tonight's discussion was to send, this item would approve $50,000 for the design of those two signs. In that, you know, you're, you're just designing one sign, but in this design, or monument, excuse me, sorry, Don.
Can I say something?
We would, in that design of the monument, there's two locations. So, there has to be design on the two locations. So, that's part of the design and why the cost is 50,000 and not 25 for just one, is there's, you know, you're putting them in two different locations. The electricity has to be different. So, there is, you know, quite a bit of work in that item to design those monuments. And so, what this would do is this is $50,000. You would be amending the AEDC budget by 50, the marketing budget by 50, well, actually, you'd be adding to the, you would be allowing us to spend $50,000 to, to put the design. Western Builder would be the designer of these signs, and they would sub some of that work out.
And I talked to Mike today, same thing, you know, because I asked him about, you know, should it just be one? He said they're just, they're looking at the design of one monument, but two site plans, you know, because each one is unique, each one requires different things. And he said that's, we, 50 would be plenty to make them in underneath that. But that way, it would give us a good idea, instead of just that random number, I think, that we threw out of 650, I think, or whatever it was.
615, I believe.
615. This way, we could actually design it, look at our real costs, and have a hard number to look at to maybe help out with, you know, give us some comfort with that thing, instead of it just being that big amount.
So, the purpose is to complete a design, pay small amount of money to go ahead and get these, all the variables out of them, so we can get a hard dollar figure back before we, we can justify the cost for the two large monuments.
Yes, sir. And then, we would come back to ask for the funds to actually build them.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Carter or Councilman Tips?
I still don't think this is an AEDC function.
Well, we, just to address that, I mean, we had Mr. Hyde on the phone last time.
I understand what you did, I still, I still don't agree.
Okay.
I mean, the thing is, they're here to create jobs, okay? Why doesn't the city, the city wants a sign, let the city pay for it. Give them the $50,000 out of the city budget. I mean, I'm good with that. Giving them this $50,000 out of the city, it's not their AEDC's job.
I think the AEDC's job, I mean, not to get into an argument here or disagreement, but the AEDC's job is to market Amarillo. That's the job. I mean, when you bring, when you bring people into Amarillo to look at moving a business or expanding a business or moving people here, that's just a part of it. It's a piece. Marketing is a huge deal, and talking with Mr. Fairley, you know, as we went through the AEDC meetings, that that is a key piece of this, of what they do is truly marketing.
Is that what you're supposed to do every time you sell? It's not.
Not really. But, I mean, you can have your opinion.
Make your motion.
Well, let me, I have no problems with the sign. I think the sign would be great as a matter of principle.
Monuments.
If we've got, if we've got other, I'm sorry, monuments, granite establishments, whatever you want to call them.
Yes.
I just feel if there's other funding sources other than the AEDC, I would like to reserve as much money for the AEDC to do the core mission at which the AEDC does and no one else can do. And we've got, I'm sure we still have discretionary spending in our city council budget that could pay for this easily, that could be done, and I just, you know, because I don't know how much it's going to cost to come back, I'd rather leave that money in the AEDC and then handle this with the city budget.
Okay, let me describe, let me describe the city process just to recap. So, the difference in the AEDC is we can procure a $50,000 payment, let them use Western Builders, do their own design, do their own value engineering, whatever, they bring it back, and we execute the order. If we want to pay for it out of the city fund, which we do have, and I can see the benefit on keeping it out of city dollars, right? But the drawback there is in procurement, so now what you need to do is you need to go out for proposal or RFQ to get designers, then you need to hire a designer, start the process over, let them do the designs, then you put that out for bid, let any and all bid it, then you award the bid, then we would vote for it once we had, you know, the bid selected. So the cost effectiveness of that might not be as much as we would think, and it's going to take some of staff's time, but we also may not get the designs quite right, and these are peculiar. So I think if you were doing this privately, you could definitely use different companies that maybe, you know, are willing to kind of take a risk, but then when you're doing this publicly with public monies, and it is text dot, I think you're going to be a little bit of an uphill battle to get people that want to go after a small job with this much red tape on it. So this one is, this one is unique.
So Western Builders wouldn't go after it?
Well, right now, I think Western Builders is willing to design and build it.
Yeah.
You would have to find a designer to design it, which I don't know that we've ever had a design done by an engineering firm for $50,000 at the city, but maybe. I mean, most of our lets are large contracts.
We have small projects.
Do we have small projects that we can design? Does counsel have any middle ground? Do we have any other way to procure this without going through?
I had to ask Grayson, as far as could we not procure it and the AEDC pay for it?
Well, you mean, the city pay for it and AEDC procure it, so we would actually?
Well, I mean, just to be sure that we're getting the best deal for our citizens.
Right.
You know, because to me, my whole issue is the procurement aspect of making sure my citizens are getting the best deal and not just using the AEDC to go fund projects when we have the money to fund it ourselves.
Understood.
If the only, if the only drawback is time on the procurement side, then, I mean, I don't think we're in a rush for signs.
I think it's more the process as well and the efficiency.
Yeah, I would tell you that Western will not put in a bid to design the project if they do not get the project.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Mike, I'm sure he told you that, Councilmember Tips.
Yes.
They're doing this as kind of a favor for, you know, some of the things that we've done in the past. This is a small project for them, and so they're doing this kind of as...
At a cost plus.
As a cost plus.
So it doesn't get, in my opinion, and Mayor can speak to this, it doesn't get more efficient than that, as far as city resources involved, city staff, the timing, and I think it's good for Amarillo. I mean, I think it's a good thing for Amarillo.
I just think the best thing to do, if we're going to be transparent, we need to put it out for bid. This city needs, the city citizens need to put into it, input. I mean, just going out and saying, I'm going to give it to Western Builders because he's going to pay, but he's not going to do it if I don't give it to him, that's not right. I don't like being pushed against the wall, saying, I got to do something.
That's not, that's not what they're saying.
No, that's exactly what you're saying.
They're saying if they go to the trouble of designing, if they go to the trouble of designing it for this amount of money, because they're not making any money, they're going to bid, I mean, they're servicing it all out.
On a lot of bids, I get a bid a lot of times from, to build buildings and stuff, they don't charge me for that. I may get five bids.
Well, it wasn't a threat.
Well, there's two different processes now in this deal.
No, it wasn't a threat at all. They're just saying, no, they're just saying, no, 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 no. They're just saying this is not a typical project that they do, but it is a, it's a large monument, it's a construction, it's large, it's extremely large, so they have the, yeah, they have the ability to do it. It wasn't a threat.
It's not, it's not a threat. Please don't take it that way.
He was just saying, this isn't typically something that we would do, but we're a good client of theirs, they've done a lot of work for us, and they said we would be willing to do it, we'd be happy to do it. If it goes out for bid, we probably wouldn't participate in it because it's not going to be at this cost plus that we're doing, and that's just not the way it's going to be done, so.
Maybe they better do it. It's made, I don't know.
To...
When you don't have anything to compare it to, I'm told, what was it, 600,000? Is that where we were?
That's, that's why we're doing that.
We can get you some comparisons of what Arlington did, and theirs was somewhere around 1.2 million.
Okay.
And Andrew, do you remember what the other, what the other city we looked at, and it was somewhere right around a million?
Yeah, they were all over a million.
They were all over a million for two signs.
They about the same size?
Roughly.
They're small.
Yeah, I mean, sort of similar, I mean...
So we're, it's easy to look at this project like we're not a big cumbersome, kind of unattractive customer at times, you know, so like, this is, this can be going through a municipality, going through all the procurement for a job like this, this can be unattractive for a contractor in the middle of tech stops right away, in the middle of their highways. So I think when you do look at it like that, it is not as exorbitant as it hit you originally in the cost. I agree, if I was putting up two signs, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they should cost, you know, that much, but then if I do look at it in the way the monument works and then all of the safety factors in construction and in and out, traffic control, whatever you're doing to get there. So I would say, counsel, we need to, we need to stay focused on the fact that this is a proposal to use AEDC money, and if you're against that, then we vote against this proposal. But if we get this passed, then in essence, we are still bringing it back to counsel to vote for or against, is it the right amount of money? And at any given point in time, we could push it back over to the city side, but, I mean, I don't think it's going to be any less money.
Again, for me, it's not the money, it's just, it's where the money's coming from. Grayson, Brian, any, any way to take advantage of the flexibility that the AEDC has, but pay for it out of our bucket?
No, if we're using city funds, you would need to do the procurement process.
So what is your opinion, Grayson, on this? You've seen things done, y'all have got some experience in it. I mean, using the AEDC versus using the city?
Well, obviously, AEDC funds are eligible for this, city funds are eligible for this, so both funds are eligible to do this purpose here. I've not built a monument in my career, so one thing we could do is we could see, it sounds like there have been some examples, pull to see what other communities have done, and so if you see 100 or 900 million dollars or so spent, then this deal may be an opportunity. Of course, right now, you're, this right now is just to design it right now. You're not looking to build it right now, you're looking to design it. So you've identified a qualified designer, and so you're tasked with designing it. They're going to bring back to you a design with a cost estimate, you can either vote up or down, say, nope, too much, or so forth and so. Mr. Carter, when they design it, they're going to give us a set of plans, right?
I would guess, that's right.
I would think so, yes. So I, I mean, if I'm understanding it, they give you a set of plans, if you so wish, you could then bid that out at that point. So, but I think part of this is, I think what Western's saying is, is that we design it, our intent is to then build it. So that's, I think that's their intent, I obviously think they're going to design it with their intent of their own process doing it, so.
I will make a motion that we accept 12-10-24-3.
I'll second.
You're going to shake, man.
You said accept it, yeah?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on 9L? Are you sure? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Mr. Carter, appreciate you being here. At this time, we're going to officially adjourn. Thank you guys for staying late, we appreciate you guys working through a long meeting.
And Merry Christmas.
Have a great night. And Merry Christmas. Oh, we got it.